The council meeting of September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Please note, all council members are present. I'm going to turn the time over to Vice Chair Hare to announce and perform the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. We have distinct pleasure today to have Ogden Police Department Honor Guard here. We are celebrating Constitution Day tomorrow, and since this was the council meeting that was closest, we decided to do that today. They will be with us to present the flag, and at the appropriate time, I'll ask for the pledge, but if we could all rise for the presentation of the flag.
Honor Guard, halt. Face. Present. Arms.
Please join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Host. Colors. Honor Guard. Face. Forward. March.
The audience may be seated. It's very special to have the Honor Guard with us today. Chair, if I might speak a little bit about our great Constitution. And please forgive me a little bit, I get a little misty when I start talking about some of these documents that are so near and dear to us and so important for our country. I have thought a lot about our Constitution as the keel on a boat. It is what keeps our country on track, and so it's important that I think we celebrate it once a year, and I have some comments I'd like to make. On September seventeenth, seventeen eighty seven, that's two hundred and thirty-eight years ago tomorrow, delegates in Philadelphia placed their signatures on a bold new framework of government, the United States Constitution. It didn't emerge easily, it came after months of disagreement and compromise, and on that Friday, or final day, the convention's elder statesman, eighty-one-year-old Benjamin Franklin, offered a short speech that still offers guidance for our own times. Franklin admitted he didn't agree with everything in the document. In fact, he confessed that parts of it troubled him. But then he did something remarkable. He urged the delegates to sign it anyway. Why? Because he believed in the humility and practicality required for self-government. He suggested that each of us should doubt a little of our own infallibility. In other words, a healthy republic is not built on the certainty that I am always right, but on the willingness to recognize that I might not be. Franklin went further. He says, "I consent to this Constitution because I expect no better, and because I am not sure that it is not the best." That statement isn't cynicism, it's civic wisdom. He understood that in a diverse nation, perfection is impossible, but progress is available when we compromise, commit, and then work together to improve what we have created. Think about what that means for us today. The Constitution did not freeze the country in eight in seventeen eighty seven, it created a living framework with tools to adapt, amendments, elections, checks and balances, and independent judiciary. Over time, we use those tools to expand rights and participation, to correct injustices, and to better align the country with its founding ideals. None of that happened because everyone agreed on everything. It happened because Americans argued passionately and then, like Franklin, chose cooperation over stalemate. Here at the local level, we see Franklin's lessons in action every day. City government is where national principles meet neighborhood realities. We hold meetings, steward public funds, pave streets, protect safety, and plan for growth. We listen to each other, adjust, and keep going. The work isn't perfect, but it's purposeful, and it matters. As we mark Constitution Day, let's honor Franklin's example. First, practice civil humility. Be curious, listen well, and doubt a little of our own certainty. Second, participate. Read the Constitution, teach it to your kids and grandkids, volunteer and vote. Third, persist. When disagreements arise, as they will, choose constructive compromise over cynicism. A Philadelphian once asked Franklin what kind of government the Constitution had created. His answer was simple: a republic, if you can keep it. Keeping it is our task, let's get to work on that. And if you'll remember, Ronald Reagan said that our freedoms are one generation away from dissolving if we ignore them and don't fertilize and foster them. We live in a great country, and it does require effort on our part to keep it that way. In light of the circumstances over the last week, it's important that our civil dialogue be measured and cool. Well, maybe "cool" isn't the right word. Sometimes it will get heated, but it should always be respectful. That's a concern that I've had because of the assassination of Charlie Kirk. We need to be respectful of those in whom we disagree. We need to listen, not assume that we have all of the answers. Others do have some points that are worth considering, and that's what I have to say. I appreciate all of you being here because you're here for the public process, and that's what we're here for tonight. And I, that's my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Chair Hare. All right. Thank you to our police Honor Guard. Thank you for being here and doing that.
Can we give them a little bit of a...
Yeah.
You're welcome anytime you want to come and do this for our council meeting.
All right. If we could just take a quick moment of silence, oh, if that's okay, then we'll move to acknowledgements and other comments. All right, thank you. Other comments? Thank you. Looks like the mayor would like to say something real quick.
I wanted to take the opportunity with the color guard here, but also with the members of the public that are here, especially on the, I'll call it a prelude, with the Constitution being recognized. I read an article this morning in the Deseret News that was reflective of a survey that said that our public, and it differs by generation, and it also differs by education, but that we are relying less and less on the foundation of our Constitution and more and more on individual opinion and individual circumstance. And so I think it's a timely time. It is timely that we recognize the Constitution and celebrate that it's gotten us this far. I also wanted to mention that in light of all of the things that are happening nationally, the dialogue and rhetoric that is flying about, I'm often asked, "Why aren't you more of an activist in your role?" And I often say, "Because I'm responsible for taking action." Actions that are required in order for our republic and our Constitution to function, including providing opportunities for our police officers to enforce the law consistent with our Constitution. And I make them one promise every single time we swear in new officers. I say, "I'll make one promise that I won't politicize you, and I need you to make one promise back," is that you will enforce the law consistent with the Constitution of the United States of America, and that the Constitution is our moral compass, and that that compass guides us in our policies. It guides us in our laws, the laws guide us in our policies, our policies guide us in our training, and our training guides our instincts. And then I don't want their instincts to be based on politics. I want it to be funneled back into the foundation of that Constitution, because everybody deserves the right to liberty and to have their own self-governance and to succeed in this community, and it requires that we have the rule of law. So it's important that we remember the Constitution and how far it's gotten us. But I also want to say that having provided, in this city for a lot of years, a police force that operates at the level of professionalism that it does, I want to call out something that they deserve recognition for, is when the world is suffering and struggling through the things that we are, there are a lot of people across this country, including in the state and in the city, that are tasked with action and responsible governance and resourcing people that do good work. And our police department was called upon, you guys, and you don't know this, that's why I'm telling you, is that tips were flooding into the FBI and to local police around the assassination of Charlie Kirk, sixteen thousand plus at the end of the day. And those needed to be sorted out somehow, and they were distributed throughout the country, and nationwide resources were put into this case. And I just want to call out that a thousand of those tips, more than a thousand of those tips, were handed to the Ogden Police Department through the State Information and Analysis Center, CYAC, to the Ogden City Police Department's ATAC, our Area Tactical Analysis Center. That's our means of having intelligence for this community to keep us safe. And I just want this community to know that we have a police department that's second to none for a reason. They put in the work and invest in themselves to be good, be great, and they've developed an ATAC that is the first cull for the state. Not even Salt Lake City has what we have. They're trying to create it right now. It was in the mayor's last budget in Salt Lake City. We have that here in Ogden, and we use that. Every single time that there's a protest, and on Sunday when there was a vigil, we do a really thorough threat assessment following established protocols and research very deep to identify a level of threat and concern. And they do a lot of work in pre-staging and preparing resources, and we spend a lot of money and time on that, you guys. And it's important that we do that because we want to make sure that we keep our community safe. And I want people to know that when we have events, that's what happens. It doesn't guarantee anything, but it only guarantees that we're doing everything we can with what we have to keep the city safe. And I think that our police department deserves recognition that of the sixteen thousand tips that came in across the country and across the world, that a thousand of them were scoured, vetted, processed by staff, personnel, and officers that work here in Ogden. That's something that I think that I'm very proud of, and it's what really takes up a lot of our time day to day. It's not, at the local level, it's not the Washington DC politics, it's not the left versus the right, it's the work of getting things done and done right, and that's what we all need to be focused on, is getting it right for as many people as we can so that people can live a good and prosperous life here in Ogden. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Madam Chair. I just want to acknowledge Ogden City Public Works. Every day I get to drive by Twentieth and Harrison, and I watch their progress on the street there that's kind of always been a complicated intersection, where Valley Drive bends around and comes into Twentieth Street, and I've watched that work taking place. It's pretty complicated, and it's kind of an engineering feat, and I just want to give a shout out to them for that. And for, last week, I had a bird's eye view of the work they did in Ogden Canyon where they had a waterline break, and it looked like they were re-digging the tunnel that goes underneath Ogden Canyon to connect the trail from the trailhead that goes up onto the east side of Ogden Canyon over the Birdsong Trail by Rainbow Gardens, and they did a masterful job there with a very complicated situation. So shout out to them. And one other constitutional thing, as one of the newest members of the Ogden City Council, I am firmly committed and believe in the nonpartisan nature of this city council and of our city. It is refreshing to be able to vote for causes and purposes that benefit everybody, and we're not divided by partisan politics in any way. And I think that is reassuring and really beautiful. And a shout out to residents of the state of Utah, because at a time, as our mayor mentioned and Vice Chair Hare mentioned, when there's been something political that happened with the assassination of Charlie Kirk, instead of having riots like they've seen in other states, or having elevated discourse and anger, we have celebrated by having vigils and by coming together and recognizing a person who may not have been, we may not have all agreed with him, but at the same time, we recognize the sanctity of life and the importance of a father and a husband whose life was taken far too young. And so I just am grateful to be a part of this community and grateful for the leadership we have, and especially grateful for the good people of our community and of our state. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that I'm also very grateful for Ogden, and in a little bit different way. Last Wednesday, there was a ribbon cutting up at the corner of Quincy and Twenty-Fifth Avenue, and this is the new Q-25 apartment building. It's the anchor for the Capitol Square redevelopment up there, and this is a hundred and seventy-one apartment buildings with beautiful amenities, and it's affordable. And by affordable, it's the rents are suited for somebody that earns sixty percent of the average median income. And looking at the rents and talking to representatives of the development company up there, this particular segment of the rental market is affordable for those that provide services, our service workers in this community, those that work in our restaurants, work in our bars, work in our hotels, and make Ogden go for the rest of us, that count on those services and generate income for our businesses. If our workers don't have someplace to work, our businesses suffer because they can't hire people, because they can't afford to live here. So I'm very grateful for the development and the startup at Capitol Square. It was just a beautiful facility, and it's going to be a renaissance in that neighborhood. It's adjacent to our free OGX line, which provides access to the front-runner and minimizes the need for the use of a car, which is also expensive for people to use. So it's just a win-win for Ogden and the residents that will populate that area. It was a pleasure to have an opportunity to be part of that ribbon cutting.
Great. Anything else?
Chair, if I might, just, well, it's a little personal. On, I believe it was Thursday, I lost track of my days last week, but I was in Hawaii on Pearl Harbor, just getting ready to tour the Arizona Memorial, when I received the text from Councilmember Ritchie about the shooting. And so, of course, at that point, I heard it was in Utah, and I thought, "Oh, not in Utah." And then I hoped it wasn't a Uton, you know? Anyway, just being on the Arizona Memorial, it is a very sobering thing anyway. And, but then, after, all was said and done, you know, we learned that Charlie Kirk had actually passed from his injury, and that it was a Uton that committed the act, at least allegedly. Guess that we have to still say that. But the thing that was really great was, is what Councilmember Meyer says, that there weren't vandalism and riots and cars on fire and things of that nature, that, you know, if we're going to disagree, let's disagree in a way that's respectful. And I appreciate that that happened here in Utah. Hopefully, that happens, no matter which side feels injured. That's what I hope going forward, so.
Great. I always look to Councilmember Chaburka, there's always something. Not tonight.
Well, I apologize, Chair. This last weekend, I was so bummed, I missed the last farmer's market, and I heard there was such a cool Dogton. I would have loved to go there, my dogs wouldn't be able to handle it. But all the pictures I saw were amazing. I just had a little cold, so I didn't go out on the weekend, but it looked amazing, so I really appreciate that event.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, thank you, everyone, for participating. Our Honor Guard has left, but remember tomorrow? I saw the QR code if you want to know more about Constitution Day. All right?
Yeah, I would really recommend, I try to read it once a year, just because I think we ought to know what's in there. We ought to know where the powers come from, we ought to know how come the president has powers, we ought to know why the Congress has powers, we ought to know about the judiciary. You won't know that unless you read this, because it's just not everywhere. You're going to have, but it's four pages long. There's a lot of words in those four pages, but it's four pages long. But do it, you could do that once a year. It's just not that hard.
In three-point font.
Exactly.
All right. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes, the work session of July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, Councilmember Blair.
Yes, thank you, Chair White. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be correct.
The joint work session of August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Councilmember Graff.
And I reviewed those this morning, and to the best of my recollection, they are correct.
And last, the regular meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes, Chair White, I've reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate, and make a motion that we adopt the minute, or approve the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Graff. This is a voice vote.
Voice vote.
Man, I am off tonight. A voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next on our agenda is reports from the Planning Commission. Mr. Joe Simpson, I think, is it? Just for the proposed rezone of eight fifty-three Seventh Street.
Chair, members of the council, it's really good to be with you tonight. So what we have is a petition that's doing a few things. We're looking at a rezone from single-family to, I called it new for a long time, but I guess it's a little older, R-two-S zoning. It's a two-family, small-lot zone, and this also includes a conditional overlay which involves a development agreement, so we'll dig right into it. This property is very uniquely situated, runs a long canal system, and has very limited access as far as to the public streets. There is a bit of frontage off Seventh Street and some access via easement off of Monroe This had actually been looked at twice by the Planning Commission. The initial review of the petition was the two parcels on the east side of the property, and then a neighboring property that has also some vacant property wanted to be part of that petition, so it went back to the Planning Commission again for that review. So it went back to the planning commission again for that review. So with, in total, with all of these parcels, we're looking at just over 12 acres of property. And the proposal is to create small lot, single-family homes. And this also includes a owner-occupied deed restriction with the rezone. Just to kind of outline the properties, it spans over these two plats here and then in the hashed area off of Monroe is where that is that claimed easement from Monroe And then this puts it all together. So, as indicated, most of the, the property that we see here, it's, it's very natural. It's, it's an open, open space. There's a lot of topography, canals, there's a little pond on the property as well. Had several neighbors come and educate the commission and staff on some of the history and sounds like people have had many memories through this property in the natural scape. One thing to point, there is an existing home off of Monroe, so where we see that easement, that's part of the lot that is kind of spacing between the different properties at 817 Monroe. And that's existing, single-family home on its own parcel, which wouldn't be considered as part of this, this development and petition for rezoning and development agreement.
Joe, could I ask a question about that?
Anything.
Now, that currently, they access from Monroe and I guess it's functioning as a driveway?
Yep.
What functionally happens there? Does that be, in essence, become a street at this, for this development? And then he's just fronting that street? Is that, is that what happens here?
So this petition and the development agreement that we're looking at would not be streets. These are actually private driveways, is how they function. And I'll, I'll kind of show the, the difference here in a little bit, but yeah, it, in essence, would just be a private drive, one of the access points into the development.
I'm still confused.
Okay.
So, maybe I'll just talk to you later. I'll talk to Pat, I see him back there too, so.
Yeah, so in essence, it's not a road, but a driveway access. And I think this, these next slides, we can go in more, we'll kind of explain it a little bit. Some of the things we wanted to look at, though, with the community plan, it does talk about how the importance of any residential development, having the design match, you know, the, the area, we're surrounded by single-family homes, so that would be important. And then it talks about identifying future options that would support and enhance viability of homeownership. And so I, I do want to point out that this petition for the single-family only development wasn't something that was recommended by staff. This is how the petition came in. So the developer really desires to be able to build single-family homes on this property and to have them platted and deed restricted for individual ownership. The development agreement that has in the petition that, that is, company has property, has it as a 10-year deed restriction for owner occupancy. Of course, you could sell to another owner, but the owner has to live there and that's part of that deed restriction. This was the first review that we looked at. And then with the additional property that was added, it allowed things to be spaced out a little bit more, add a little addition, and some additional access to the development. This is showing a concept of how the developer would like to develop those small lot, single-family homes. And this shows kind of those driveways that would connect throughout the development. The darker colored areas are areas of topography that are of concern. And so the goal is try and develop with the topography that's on the site and have, have those roads and, or drives, I should call them, private driveways follow that topography. One thing that was mentioned later that we didn't discuss, and really, we could look at this more, is the group dwelling development. And that's the, the choice that is being presented with this rezone is the ability to do a group dwelling type development, which would create it so the individual building pads would be owned individually, but the property all around it would be owned in common and managed by a homeowners association. So that is the type of development we're looking at.
And does that include the private drives as well?
Mm-hmm. That is correct. And so, one thing that came up when we were looking at this, though, and we, we feel maybe this is something we want to have added to the development agreement that will go before the mayor to look at, is the community plan does talk about connecting a trail system through to Ninth Street Park over to Seventh Street. And so that would be following the canal. It talks about a, a primary path and an optional path. And so on this, we've, we've kind of shown and just read roughly what that could look like. I did talk with our parks manager, Monte Stewart. He, there was concerns about the maintenance of this and with the HOA, they would, this would be something that they would maintain, but under the subdivision plat, we would look at having it be a public easement that would run through, that public could use to provide some connectivity through the development. So to kind of hit on, just, I highlighted what the group dwelling looks at. And there's several standards in the code that we'll look at trying to require these homes to have certain amenities, outdoor open space amenities for the, the HOA to be able to use. There's patio requirements. Also, the requirement to have that connection throughout the development to connect each of the individual entrances to the homes, directly connecting to the sidewalks along the streets. And then with that addition, also having the connection to the park. So why are we doing it this way? It's R16, why not look at just doing a single-family development with roads? And this kind of shows the difference. And these are two subdivision plats. They're actually near this property. The one on the left, Melody Lane subdivision is a, what do I call a standard-type subdivision with public streets that run through and a cul-de-sac and individual platted lots. The right-of-way for Melody Lane is, is 50 feet. One thing to note, today's standards for street right-of-way widths would be 60 feet at a minimum. And so it does eat up quite a bit more space, whereas when you look at the private subdivision, you'll see these are those private driveways. And then the little boxes are actually those building footprints. And this is a development directly to the south of, of this property near 12th Street and has an HOA that maintains those common open areas and, you know, maintenance of their private drives, snow removal, garbage pickup, things of that nature.
Can I, can I get you while you're still on that slide?
Yeah.
Kind of unrelated, but why does Melody Lane touch Monroe but not connect? It's unrelated to this petition, but do you know?
I, I don't. I would have to refer to engineering to, to take a look at that. I'm not sure.
It's not related to this, but it...
...through street. Rose stopped, used to stop at 20th. And it came after Melody, Melody Lane ended.
She, she might be on to something.
Yeah. Sounds like it.
But it did, it did always go to, to at least Ninth, though. Went a little past Ninth to the, anyway.
Yeah.
Unrelated, like I said.
Yeah. I'm really just showing this as an example of ownership.
Yeah.
Where you have lots or you have building pads in an HOA.
So, and Joe, just real quick, the right-of-way in a public street is 60 feet. What is it in a private development?
So if it is going to be a road or a street, it still requires the same standards, whether it's private or public.
So 60 feet?
Yes. For, where the design standards within a typical 60-foot right-of-way, so that would, it's not just the road, but includes park strips, sidewalks, things of that nature. So whether they're private or public streets, the same standards apply. But when they become driveways and private driveways, that is what gives the ability to be able to create connections that don't have to have those same width requirements. They are subject to standards, and this is kind of giving a breakdown of like comparing a standard lot, what I call standard lot subdivision with public or private roads, and then a private subdivision, which would be like a group, would have a group dwelling type development with private drives. And what we see is, you know, you get with the standard subdivision, you have your own lot that's under its own individual ownership, whereas private, it's, it's commonly owned land and just only own the building underneath it. You don't necessarily have an HOA in a standard subdivision, though. Some, like I've seen along UDOT roads, UDOT will make them have an HOA to maintain a strip along the, the UDOT right-of-way. Whereas if you do a private, obviously you have to have an HOA. The other is, in standard subdivisions or those streets have the ability to be dedicated to cities, so the city would then maintain those, clean them, to be able to do trash pickup and accommodate our equipment. Where the other is, you know, they're, with those right-of-way widths and those standards, they can require additional restrictions as far as traffic movements. So on the street, where if you have a street connecting to a street, there are certain separation requirements for intersections that you just don't have when it's a private driveway. And so some, best way, I guess, to see it is, any street, you're not going to have that concrete ramp going up into the development, where these, these private driveways, they're actually would have a concrete approach coming off of like Monroe or Seventh Street that then go into these private driveways. So with the challenges with this property, with the topography and limited access, it really just doesn't provide the space needed to get a typical private, standard subdivision, whether they're public roads or private roads. And really, this is kind of a type of infill that's occurring on, on this property that's being sought, so. The other things that were presented is these are showing kind of these, the, the single-family homes that they're looking at and being considered. There is a variety of, of different designs, so these wouldn't be like cookie cutter type homes. There's varying different elements to the building and architecture to add some variety. But one thing that the petitioner's always made very clear is the, the attempt of this is to try and create single-family homes that are affordable. And that's, we can, we can make that work with townhomes and condos, but single-family homes can be very challenging. And that's what the intent of this petition that's before you. I want to also emphasize what we are considering with this development. There's a lot of unknowns that need to be considered. There are a lot of traffic studies, there are geotechnical hazard studies and soil studies. There's a lot of work that needs to be done as far as potential easements and issues that way. This is one that, you know, was presented that kind of shows that easements with the canal, you know, getting utilities work fall for sewer. And so what we're looking at today is really just, you know, a concept of what is wanting to be developed. There will be additional requirements if the council chooses to approve the petition that would involve at least two public meetings for preliminary and final group dwelling, another meeting for subdivision requirement, site plan reviews, building permit reviews. And so there's quite a bit more that would be involved. I think what the petitioner is just asking is, this something that the city could support? And then if, if the zoning would, if we do approve the zoning and allow something like this to occur, then taking that next step of investing in all of those studies and determining if this is a feasible thing that can occur. One of the nice things with this being a development agreement, it does put a timeframe on the zoning. So a time to prepare, to perform, to go through those reviews and to obtain permits. Those, if this isn't able to be achieved, that clock would tick and the zoning would revert back to the original zoning under the development agreement, so. The commission looked at this, there was a lot of input and discussion. Ultimately, the commission did recommend approval of the proposed rezone and development agreement. And that's my presentation.
All right.
Could, could you give the, the no vote reasons?
Yeah. The two commissioners that gave the no vote, they really felt that the natural area should be preserved and that we're adding a lot of density to this natural area. And they felt like that, that should be protected. So even talked about, could we look at having this as a park or something? But, you know, that would require, obviously, the city would have to purchase that and we'd have to develop it for that, so.
And was there much public input when this petition came to the planning commission?
Yeah, there was quite a bit. And I think a lot of the feedback that came from the public was dealing a lot with the natural area, you know, the concern of impact to wildlife and, and things that, that use the property, but also concerns, you know, which we have as well, dealing with traffic impacts, you know, utilities, topography and that, that, again, that's something we would typically look at in the site plan review, group dwelling process, the subdivision plat process, so.
Another question I've got is, how much disruption to that area will have to happen by the developer in order to figure out whether this is going to really work?
Yeah. It, it will require some. Hazard studies will typically require deep borings. If there's faulting, which I don't think there's faulting, it's mainly probably drainage, topography. We'd have to refer to State Hazards Map, but my understanding, it's really just more topography is the concern that we had when we looked at this with our building official. So there, there will be some that would have to occur, getting equipment on the site to be able to, to trench and to be able to bore for those, for those tests.
Is that part of the development agreement, that that, that remain at a minimum while this, this initial period is going on?
That's not specifically called out as, as part of the development agreement. There is, we do have built-in code, some protections, you know, dealing with tree groves and, and, and tree preservation for significant trees. But, yeah, as far as disturbance, the hope is that you're always, that we're not going to scrape the whole site and certainly that's not something that could occur. But, yeah, there isn't specific language in the development agreement on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, can you talk about that access off Monroe? From what I understand, there's maybe some, it hasn't quite 100% been settled as to the validity of that, that easement? Is there, what's, what's the status on that as far as that conversation and?
Yeah. You know, there was some question as whether that could be used for this development or if it was really meant to be for the, just maintenance or access of the natural environment. That's a private easement and so the, the specifics, we don't have. That's a private easement, and so the, the specifics, we don't have. We do, as part of the subdivision plat process, require thorough title reports to be done, and we would analyze that and need to make sure there is assurance that easements are intact as part of that process.
So essentially just title, title work to establish or settle that, that's what that looks like, or is there anything?
It could, it could be title, it could, we could have clarity with the title, and it would need to be reviewed by legal staff, but there may be additional things that would need to be considered privately, um, in a civil kind of settlement.
All right, we may have some in a minute.
All right.
Actually, before you, before you leave, just tell me again, so they would still have to go through site planning subdivision, what were the three things?
Yeah, I'll, I'll name them off. So if this was to occur, next step would be, um, working on a preliminary group dwelling with a site plan review. They'd also be working on a subdivision plat at that time as well. And we would have public meetings and notices on those. We would do a full staff review, take it to the planning commission for review. The plat would also go to the mayor for a final review. Then we would also need to do a final group dwelling review, and they would need to finish their site review, do building permit review as well. We also need to have the development agreement reviewed, that would be the very next step is the development agreement reviewed by, by mayor.
Those, those reviews don't come back to us, though, those would go to the planning commission.
Planning commission and mayor.
Yeah, thanks.
So in, and none of those things would take, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I'm, I'm thinking none of those things would take place until the developer was, had determined that the hurdles that lie in front of him or her are surmountable.
That's correct, because under the current zoning, if they were to submit a group dwelling application, we would just reject it because the legislative governing of the land, the zoning, is not in place to allow a group dwelling to occur on the site, because it's a single-family zoning.
Right, but they, they've got a number of
Yes.
tricky questions to kind of answer before there's going to be any more action requested of the city.
Exactly. I'd be a little more hesitant if it was just a straight rezone, but I think the way staff feels with the development agreement and it having that clock, if it comes to find out, all that investment's put into those studies and we just can't get it to work, it, it'll just revert back to the, to the current zone.
And the, remind me, Joe, how long does the clock tick?
It depends on the agreement and language. I believe we have it set up now, where they've got eighteen months to go through and have their site plan, their application in, and that would start an eighteen-month period to obtain permits. And, um, so it's about three years.
Joe is the petitioner here today?
I believe he was, yes. He's wearing a shirt.
He has batteries for that shirt.
If you want, put your sunglasses and look this way, he's right there.
All right, any other questions for Joe before we bring the petitioner up? All right, great, thanks, Joe.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Burns, would you want to come up?
A little shorter than Joe, Pat Burns. It's really good to be here. Before I get started, I want to just say, um, as a developer, I go to, um, city council meetings all the time, I mean, at least usually once a week, twice a week, planning commission meetings. I haven't been to Ogden in a few years, but I know several of the members here, and, uh, it's good to be with a very good professional, exactly, the way a city council should be run. As a developer, as a professional developer, it's good to have that, uh, rule of law that it's done correctly and appropriately, and it's done the way it should be with a legislative body that answers and does the parliamentary procedure correct and all the, anyways, it's just really good to see that and to feel, kind of like I'm at home, I'm like, oh, good, I'm back with Ogden again, this is great. So I used to do quite a few developments here, I kind of went out, did a lot with Western Reber and a bunch of other places, but it's good to be back in Ogden, I have a couple more coming, but it's really good to see you guys and see a professional, um, city council, so I just wanted to throw that out and thank you. And agreed with your guys' comments about the constitution and what's been going on, it's been really good to feel that and, and to, uh, to see that that's happened here, so. Sorry, I just wanted to get that out before we got started, but, uh, yeah, thank you. Any questions we can, I can answer for you, it'd be great. This is, uh, a, uh, very complicated project, and, uh, you know, we're definitely trying to run through the different ideas, and, uh, I think one, Joe made one slight mistake. We are rezoning to the R2D2 zone is what we
Star Wars fan?
Yeah, just, when he was telling me what zone, I was like, you mean the what? R2D2, hey, let's do that one, so that's kind of a joke between him and I, anyway, so. But yeah, please, let me, let me know what I can help answer, or any questions or comments, concerns.
Do you currently own the property?
No.
Okay, so your purchase is contingent on your getting over some of these hurdles?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you tell me what the asking price is? And I ask because there's always an interest, and, and I want to be very sympathetic to the, the neighbors in this neighborhood, but at the same time, um, I think the, the costs involved are real, real for the city. So the idea that this is purchased and turned into a park is an expensive undertaking.
Oh, yes.
How expensive? So would the purchase of just the ground be?
So just the purchase of half of the ground, I can tell you right now, we have an existing contract, it was 2.3, we've been negotiating, and that's only half the ground. The other half, I haven't been given permission to disclose that price.
Okay, thank you.
Just half the ground is that.
That gives us re, a, a platform for speculation on what the entire chunk of ground might cost.
Correct.
And just like a developer, a park takes development of infrastructure and terrain and that sort of thing, too. So just, parks are a really expensive undertaking, just like the purchase of ground for development is an expensive undertaking.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Pat, I, the reason I asked Joe about that, uh, that access
Yes.
that, that's, that's being used as a driveway, I, I always assumed, I mean, it was up for sale, uh, a year ago.
Yeah.
I always assumed that was actually part of that house. Is it or isn't it? Is it?
So the, i- it's owned by that, the owner of the house, and there's an easement through that piece of property, so you are correct. That piece is owned by the owner of eight-one-seven.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I know he drags his garbage cans clear out to Monroe to, you know, to, to get them dumped.
Yeah.
And that's, that was the reason I asked, is I just want to make sure he, he remains legal, um, fronting, uh, another driveway, I, you know, I assume he would be, but
Yeah.
is, does that change his relationship to our waste removal people and some of those kind of things, or?
Uh, great question. In my opinion, as we brought in the development, we would be then paying for the waste removal to come into the subdivision and picking up the garbage, we would just add him to the route.
Just going to add him, okay.
What I would assume would happen.
Okay.
That's a great question.
But the other question I've got is, I guess what discussions have you had with North Ogden Canal Company since you're abutting their, their easement?
Correct.
Are, are you planning to pipe the canal? Are you going to fence the canal? What are you going to do?
So there's two canals on this property, one on the, the east and one on the west. So the one on the east, we would be piping, the one on the west, we would not be piping.
Okay. Is the one on the west, the Lynn Canal, or is that?
I, I don't want to get them wrong, I think one is
Well, there's North Ogden that's further east.
Yeah.
Lynn's, Lynn's further west.
And I think it's a confluence of two canals, to be honest with you, I think there's three canals, three bodies of water that meet there, but only in two canals, but don't hold me to that, I think that's what it was.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know if you'd made, if that was going to be part of that thing.
Yeah.
It, because if they're talking about putting a trail near that, you know, that's, that's some discussion about
Yeah.
you know, continuing the trail. It's, it's a lot of work to do, I, I'm not sure you can pull it off.
Pretty good at what we do, so I hope so.
Yeah.
In fact, Councilmember Graff had a great question, like, where does that house go in and out? Is it that same pathway?
That's, well, according to their, um, their layouts, that's, he'll, he'll just go, yeah, go through that private roadway, private driveway over to Monroe, or I guess he could go out on Seventh, too, but
Either way.
Either way.
Currently, how's he accessing?
Through that easement.
Through that, that same driveway.
Yeah, I just couldn't see it on the Google Maps, because there's too many trees.
Very beautiful home, yeah.
Pat, I just want to commend you for the insight and hard work that you've done on this project so far. There's a lot of topography in this project that makes this incredibly complicated with the slope on the hillside there and the irrigation canals and things like that, so it's well thought out, I think it's a great addition to our community, and so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, we definitely, I took my, we call my LD guy, my, the guy that does excavation for me, we walked the site, and like, look, you got to tell me we can do this. I think we can, but hey, you're the one doing the actual work, so, yeah, it was, there's been a lot of time and energy spent on, and, you know, just seeing if we can get it done, so.
What was his response?
Yes.
That's good. That's why we're here.
That's right.
Can you, can you address what, I mean, I, looking at the, the topography and everything as you start moving dirt around, what kind of protections are in place for the existing homeowners to, you know, if there's any kind of sliding or anything like that? I guess that's what the geographic or geological study is going to hopefully show, is that you could do this, or, or is that what that piece is for? And, and then as far as if there's any, any disruptions to those homes, what would that look like?
Yes, we definitely, our geotech, we rely on them a hundred percent on stuff like this, and so they would go through, we, we only do what they tell us to do and how, so the property to the left, you've got what's called the toe would be the problem, if you dig down too much, so a hill slides down like this, it's not the dirt on top that stops a hill from sliding, it's actually the toe underneath. So the problem is if we dig too much and affect a toe, then the hill, that's what actually causes the slide, it's not, it's not the top soil that sits on top, it's all, everything underneath. So we have to be very careful with that, and we have to go with protective slopes, and there's lots and lots of things we have to do, and we follow the geotech very closely, especially on a project like this. As we were saying, there is two canals that go on both sides, as far as affecting anybody else's house, we're not worried about that, it would be the houses we build that we would be worried about.
So in other projects like this that have been difficult throughout our city, we've had the developer meet with residents within the community to, to keep them informed and, and have you thought about doing any outreach to the community or the surrounding area?
Yeah, we definitely would have zero problem doing that and walk through, and we've met, we've worked, been working with the, there's two neighbors this greatly affects, obviously the house we're talking about, and there's another house just, it's called the old Big D House, if anybody knows what that is, the Big D actually built this, we've been working with them as well.
Great.
You did Village at Plum Creek, which had probably worse issues with slope than this.
Talk about toes, that was, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Any other questions?
Good memory.
All right, if we have some other questions for you, we, we can find you, I think.
I think so, I try to hide, but, you know. But thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, um, this is an opportunity, we have public input or receive input, so if there's anyone that would like to come up, state your name, and you have three minutes to, to share whatever you need, so.
My name is Suzanne Hogan, I live at seven sixty-two Liberty Avenue, which is just below this hill. We have sledded this hill for years, it's steep, and, um, it's a wonderful park. It's a place where wild animals can be seen, it is quiet, well, depending on Monroe Boulevard. But I just want to plead one more time for the city to look at this as a park. There is no other land in Ogden that has this much natural growth, natural animals, quiet, and it would make a really wonderful park, so I just want to plead with the two members who voted against it last time. You should come see it.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening to our city councilmen and women, and I'm, I'm a proud member of the city of Ogden, I've lived in the community on Seventh Street for over thirty-eight years, raised a family there, utilized all the schools in the proximity. We live at the bottom of the Seventh Street Hill on the mid-street crossing. I'm one of those individuals that, that likes to see the integrity of the city maintained and so on. I'm the guy that works with the city engineers, likes to see the, the crossing signs that we have there, I'm, I'm actually one of the residents directly across from that crosswalk sign, and from what I've seen over the last thirty-eight years of living on Seventh Street, third generation living in this home, and we have over a hundred years established in this, and that was before Liberty even had a street going from Eighth Street to Seventh Street, it was all in a orchard, and everybody said you lived out in the sticks if you lived on Seventh Street. And so my, my concerns as an, uh, an advocate for the integrity of our community is, I'm extremely concerned about the Seventh Street in and out access. We have the steepest hill in the city of Ogden right now, matter of fact, if you did your research, you would see there's no other street at that step, at that depth and incline in the city of Ogden. They have markers from Monroe down to Liberty Street, and they can tell you the elevation of that street. This is a, this is an area that has no park strip on the sidewalk for the youth to, to go from, say, Washington Boulevard or Liberty up to Ben Lomond High School, because the sidewalk goes directly out to the curb at the top of the crest of this hill, and at the crest of this hill, I'm, I'm just giving you a little bit of information because I'm not sure how many people travel it. We have a, a wonderful road with good street lighting on it, which, which also helps to keep the community a little safer, but that, that incline of that hill with those two exits and in and out on that particular location, I'm, I took to heart when I heard Mr. Ritchie say in regards to the concerns for the, uh, the Monroe direction that that was, and I could see on the map that they haven't petitioned that particular piece of property, and that residence, the Larson family that lives and still owns that property up there where they move their trash cans like you're indicating, they leave them up there and they just put them out through the street, but with, with the volume, that street right now has been increased to thirty-five miles an hour, and the signs are posted indicating that if you don't travel thirty-five miles an hour with the integrity of your tires, you can't stop at that crosswalk. And we found out that through Daniel Gillis, and I've worked with Jay Lowery, bless him in his years that he served, and, and with Anderson, the street engineers, and, and the development of that, that particular location, there is no sidewalk on the south side for the Shoshone Housing Project that's down there, um, in conjunction with that mid-street crossing. There's many homes there, many youth there, there's two homes in the front of the Shoshone Housing Project that are residential and they're renting them, so they're part of the community of the Shoshone community. And so with all the youth that travel from there, they cross the street to my side of the street, climb the hill, which is
Sorry, your time's up.
Oh.
But you didn't
My concern was, so nobody's mentioned the integrity of those irrigation ditches, and, and that, and nobody's mentioned that they, the Lynn irrigation is the lower ditch, and I believe it's Ogden Irrigation's company at the top, there's a lot of community members that use that water.
You didn't state your name either, sorry. What, what's your name?
Darrell Warner.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is David Yates, um, I'm the current owner of the home that you've had a lot of
I'm the current owner of the home that you've had a lot of questions about. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have outside of the normal concerns that have been shared to the planning commission related to the beautiful area. I have obviously a very vested interest in the home. The driveway is mine. There is a purported easement across it. Our take on that, we have sought legal opinion on that and disagree with, I guess, the position that's being taken, that it's a free-for-all. We, we feel it's an easement in gross, which does not transfer to burdened property. There is disconnect with how that transfer happened. And so I guess in coming in, working with Pat Burns to try to find resolution and solutions to this, as well as with the current property owner, I guess I would just say it's only fair that you be aware of that. And thousands of dollars have been spent to try to do that homework so that we could come with more clarity than we were at with the planning commission. I do believe that the state ombudsman's office is available to do some of that work. And so I guess as a impacted homeowner with prescriptive easement issues as well, where the road runs through the direct backyard, I would just say, what is the harm of taking the time and going to the resources of the state? There is enough negative comment and concern about the project that I would just ask that you consider that. Of an easement, even if the purported easement is valid, which we disagree, there still would be an overburdening of a driveway running into my house. And so maybe those things can be solved. I just wonder if it would be better to take some time, at least with the state ombudsman office, to get some feel on that, as opposed to helping a current landowner get excited about a development that has tremendous issues. I think it would save a lot of time and allow for more communicative discussion between the current owner, the developer, and the two property owners that are being impacted. I don't know if there, you probably can't ask any questions, but if there are, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm not at this.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Yates, I'd love for you to call me. My contact information's on the city council webpage.
Okay.
I'd love to chat with you about this.
Yeah. I would also say Pat has been good to work with. And so, you know, the dialogue that was discussed at the first of the meeting, I think, has been very appropriate. And so, anyway, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Yates.
First off, I want, oh, Laura Lewis, Ogden, Utah resident. I agree, I think you guys need to do some research, postpone this decision. It's a very complicated project and so many roadblocks. You asked about public input, too, and that was in the packet. There was a list of people and the sewer issue and all of that, you probably saw that. But I did look this, I told you about ownership, I did look at this property up at 853 Seventh Street on Zillow, and 7.93 acres is on there now for $156,000, $156,375. So it's not the full 12 acres, but that's not very much for a park. And I don't know which, what all is included in that acreage, but it's not millions. And then I am totally confused about the road system in there. Is this gonna be able to accommodate fire equipment? Who, I'm still confused, who's doing the maintenance on the roads and the trash service and things like that? And technically, these people don't own the property on these homes. All they're owning is a home, I mean, the, the structure. So it's more like a condominium than it is a home. They will build equity, but there will also, it sounds like, potentially be an HOA associated with that. And I agree, I think this should be left as green space. We have, it's, it's disappearing, and pieces like this are very rare in Ogden, in, in a residential area like this. So I do hope you give it some more consideration and postpone this. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Come on, your name? I'm Bob Swatzky, live at 762 Liberty in Ogden. I brought my bike, 'cause I biked here. I bike everywhere. I was in a bad accident about 30 years ago. I just stopped driving in Ogden. It's just, there's no point. We actually have great trails now and city biking through, you know, over the last 30 years, you've done a great job improving that. But I live at, I used to actually work at the North Ogden Branch Library, and I would bike up the Seventh Street Hill every day. Okay? And sometimes the hill won, but I would get up that hill. Okay? We bought our home in 1986. It's worth 10 times now what it cost then, but there's been great improvement all over the city, but the Seventh Street Hill, it still only has that narrow sidewalk when you're going uphill on the right-hand side and the left side, it's just gravel, it's really dangerous. I'd like to point out that when our kids went to Bonneville, it's one of the reasons we bought the home, 'cause it's Bonneville School there, which our kids went to, and then to Ben Loman, it's been great. But it wasn't safe when we bought our home to get across Liberty Avenue at the top of the hill. There was no crossing, so my wife demanded that there be a crossing on Liberty Avenue. It's like 1989 or 90, and it's, it made a huge difference. Anyway, that's the, the main thing is traffic on Seventh and safety and trees. For every tree that is cut down, I'd like to ask that a, a tree, replacement tree be planted and chosen by a real arborist, not by the developer. Okay? The third thing is I love the trail from the Ninth Street Park. That was always, always my dream, that you could hike with the kids from, from the school to the park, back and forth, and it would cut down the traffic. If you'll stop and think about it a minute, people used to walk to school with their kids in 1986. Now you don't see that, you see a parade of cars. Please build that trail. It's an ideal development. When I first spoke, the first presentation I attended, I said I didn't like anything about it, but I've cooled down and I realize it's ideal. We need this kind of development in Ogden. Everywhere I bike, I see apartment houses going up for low rent, which is important. And I admire the one that you just opened on Monroe and 25th. That's so critical, you should get a grocery store in there, too. Anyway, I guess that's all. This is ideal development and I endorse it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Richard Marsh, 893 Melody Lane, I butt right up against the canal there. I ride a motorcycle many days, and I feel a little bit safer on the freeway than I do turning into my own neighborhood sometimes. Because of that hill, people come flying up that hill. Seventh Street cannot take the amount of traffic that is being proposed to build. That hill cannot take it. More importantly, Ogden cannot take losing the green space that is at risk here. There are deer that come through my backyard, there's wild turkeys, there's raccoons, they are all my friends. Ogden cannot, I, I chose Ogden. I grew up in Murray, I came up here to go to Weber State, and I love it. I've, I feel like I've been doing everything that I've been, that, that one can do to kind of survive in this world. Your comments about the constitution and, and things being a generation away really, really sort of affected me. I, I am not much younger than, than any of you, but maybe a little bit, and I have, I will admit to being very disillusioned. I, I would love to see, I would love to see a government step up and show me that things can improve just a little bit, or that they can, they can affect my life positively in any sort of substantial way. I, I love that green space. I don't think that the, the need for homes surpasses, I think there's plenty of places in Ogden that can support single-family homes that don't contribute to the traffic in a dangerous way, that don't contribute to the, the temperature raise that would come from losing that many trees, et cetera, et cetera. I would love to be more involved. I, I'm a single dad, full-time single dad. My, my wife moved out of state and left me to figure that out. I get one night of babysitting a week if I'm lucky, and I had to use it to come here to fight for the deer and the raccoons and my friends to fight for my backyard. I'd love to see Ogden step up and protect that nature for all of us and for the future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. No one else is? Not on this subject, no. Not again. You'll have time at public comment. If, no one else? All right?
Here we go.
Okay.
Good, good evening, Chair Wyatt and council members. My name is McCade Campbell. I grew up here in Weber County and graduated from Weber State, where I was one of the first students in the environmental science program. I served as an environmental ambassador on the executive board for Weber State's chapter of the National Society of Leadership and Success. After graduation, I lived on 25th Street for five years, and Ogden has always been home to me. My professional work is in renewable energy consulting and sustainability strategy. I approach this work in a nonpartisan way. My devotion is to our community, its resilience, and its future. And I'm especially interested in how Ogden can continue building on its leadership with initiatives like Energy Wise Ogden and the Sustainability Committee. I approach this work in a nonpartisan way. My devotion is to our community and its resilience and its future. Prior to my consulting work, I co-founded Rocky Mountain Exteriors, and through that we sponsored Ogden Pioneer Days Rodeos as part of my commitment to local traditions and community. What inspires me about Ogden is how in the 1990s, leaders, citizens, and private partners came together to transform a neglected stretch of the Ogden River into the Parkway and Big D Sports Park, a project that turned an eyesore into one of the city's greatest assets. That history shows that when Ogden invests in natural areas, trails, and recreation, the return to our community is far greater than what any short-term development might bring. I'd also like to highlight how one of the biggest challenges was, how did they fund it? They tapped into private sector funding with remarkable success. In just six to eight months, they raised over $2 million, far exceeding the initial 1 million goal, and this was in the early 90s. Most funding came as donations from local foundations, companies, and individuals coordinated by Dr. Markhor and the city of Ogden and the state of Utah, each chipped in only $4,500, which was earmarked for trees and sprinklers. So I would like you guys to explore the option of preserving this space and create some sort of committee. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, no more movement in the chambers. We'll go online, Mr. Rabey? Rab? Rabey? Rabey, thank you.
Go ahead.
Your hand has been lowered, you can go ahead and speak if you want.
Sorry, I, it was waiting on some input from you, I hadn't realized. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. So Fred Rabey, I live at 811 Seventh Street, and my, my children were sick tonight, so I wasn't able to attend in person. The concerns that I've heard echoed are my own with the amount of traffic, the number of cars that I see getting stuck in the snow every year trying to get up the hill to the school. My own basement was flooded with, with 18 inches of raw sewage at one point. And, you know, there, there are a lot of concerns just beyond what's been discussed tonight that I feel would go into this development. But all being said, if this is the route that the city would prefer this, this ground go, this would be the best deal that I would be able to take under duress. So I would, I would rather not see it happen, but know that, that eventually we'll have to build houses everywhere we possibly can, unless we find the amount of green space that we need to maintain. You know, I would say I, I do see a lot of wildlife come through as well, and don't know what that would mean for them or for the amount of green that we have in the city. And I also don't know how much this would help with affordability, because what would affordability even look like? Even housing prices that would be half of what the neighborhood around is providing would not be affordable for a lot of families looking to start out and, and would be the most likely people to be able to try to occupy that small of a home. So I would, I for one would like to see what other similar neighborhoods have been able to yield as far as housing prices relative to the, to the surrounding areas, as well as what any long-term effects have been. Because if we've seen anything, you know, the long-term effects could be far worse than never developing at all. That's everything for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more hand raised with a phone number ending in 267.
I might have to hit star six or star nine to unmute.
Hi, um, this is Linda Sanchez. And if we remember, not so long ago, we were already being told that we are needing more green space. And once, once the development is there, there is no going back. I from my, there was many people, and thank goodness there wasn't enough accidents there. And I, I realize you're, you're not gonna just do it on a one-time situation of somebody having a, a problem going up and down the street. But when we see potential, and it seems like, if you're smart, you just avoid that area in the winter at all. But if we can preserve some green space while we can, remember, the mental health is not doing so well, and that's one of the ways that we can connect, to ground ourselves so that the situations in this society sometimes are, are really bothersome, and, and we need to get out and even just to walk or do something like that. And if there's no green space avail, available, I don't know what you're gonna propose other than maybe tearing down houses, but once it's gone, it's gone. So I would like you to reconsider, or at least look into it and see, to see, to really give it some data. What is really the obstacles? What are, it sounds like almost everyone around it is, is opposed for that. So, I mean, people down in the south is, in the south end, they probably don't necessarily care about it, but can we just look into it and postpone it and, and get a little more depth on this? I yield back.
Thanks, Linda. All right. Any more comments, Frank? Okay. Any comments from the council members?
I just have a quick question, sort of relating to the ombudsman and the responsibility of the easement. I mean, I, I guess I'm curious, it's not really the city's responsibility to figure out, right, it's more the developer and the property owners, right? I just want to clarify that.
I would think that's true.
Yeah, that's my understanding, right? So I just wanted to make that clear, that it's not really the city, wouldn't be doing that work with the state ombudsman, that would be between the private parties.
Yeah, and I just, I, I want to clarify a few things. First of all, this is, this has not been offered to the city, therefore, to have us purchase it and, and make it green space is not our option at this point. So I just want to clarify that. And there was a couple of other things on there, I think. And there was a couple of other things on there, I think. Just that, that was a lot of, of the comments.
I just had one other clarifying point, just to Laura Lewis. When it's deed restricted, it doesn't mean that the people don't own the land, just means that they can't sell it or they can't rent it out for 10 years. So they still...
He said that they only own the structure.
Not in my understanding, yeah, not in my understanding. I just wanted to clarify that point.
He said they only own the structure, not the property underneath. So then it just is coming in.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, thanks, Joe.
If you can clarify that for me.
Yeah. So this type of development, they, the individual homes would be individually owned. The area around the homes and the drives would still be owned by those individuals. It would just be owned in common, meaning all the owners in the development own that space and are able to use it as it is designed, as part of the development.
And that's, that's essentially managed by the HOA?
It is. It's managed. They pay, have HOA fees that pay to take care of that and take care of any issues.
So, Joe, can I park in my neighbor's driveway if I own it?
Those are tip, so I didn't want to get into it that much, but those are typically called, there's different types of common area. There's a general common area, and then there's what's called a limited common area. It's all still common, but that space would be just limited to that adjoining unit to use. And that's typically, a good plat will use limited common area for those spaces like driveways. Sometimes they want to put like a back deck on that could have a limited common area, but then those are reviewed by the HOA and approved with certain requirements and design.
And I think you said this earlier, but I want to make sure. It's already zoned R1-6, correct?
Correct.
So they, the developer could put on...
Single-family.
Single-family dwellings right now regardless, right?
Correct. If they build a bunch of roads, yes. That's the issue.
God, I mean, I understand.
Chair Wally, have Joe, can I address?
Uh huh.
You know, Mr. Yates made some comments that I think changes my thinking on this thing, you know? Not, not that, just in the, in the essence that things ought to be worked out before we plow forward. Now, was this a topic when the planning commission discussed this?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the discussion of the planning commission about that issue?
I think it all just kind of leaned on, these are just like the concern with traffic, the concern with topography and ownership. These are things that we would need studied and evaluated. We did, I, we have looked preliminarily at the, at the easement. It looks like a typical easement that, that we see for rights for access, but it is also a private easement. And so as far as any other conditions, I, we could, from the documents that we have the ability to access, didn't see any, anything glaring at us.
Mobile killers there.
Correct. As far as the ombudsman's office, I think that would be just important to note, it's not something the city would necessarily need to go do, but that, that's open also to the neighbors and the public. They can, can, if that, if that homeowner has concerns and wants that evaluated, that's something they could pursue through the state ombudsman office.
Okay. Well, I, I know it's, it's not something that, that the city would be in the middle of, and so it does sound like something that the, the Mr. Yates ought to be getting on to get that resolved somehow. And I know that easements, sometimes these easements are a handshake 100 years ago, and they don't ever get recorded, and some of those kind of things are, are challenging.
Yeah, they can be.
But, but, but we're kind of left with what is, not what was. So, okay.
As part of the development agreement, can we require them to do sidewalks externally to the development?
So the, just so you're aware, the group dwelling does require them to have sidewalks connecting all the main entrances to the sidewalks on the public streets, just so you're aware of that. As far as other public sidewalks to be installed, there typically is only something the city can require along the frontage of the property, and that's something that this, this property has a lack of as far as public street frontage. So, but within the development, those are already required under the group dwelling standards. But if it's something you want to emphasize, you can add that in the development agreement.
Do you know what a typical cost for doing a traffic site plan would be?
A traffic study?
That's, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have the privilege to be able to see how much those things cost, but we do require them, and so we don't ask them to tell us how much they paid for it. So I'm not sure of the cost. I know it'll be up to the city engineering staff or traffic engineer typically will evaluate that with the reviewing engineer, and he'll set parameters of the types of studies that need to be conducted. And those, those studies may require modifications with the roads to accommodate the project. But there has to be a nexus that has to be determined, you know, as far as the impact of the project and the amount of improvements the city can require with the project on those public right of ways.
Looks like the petitioner might have an answer to that, too. I don't know if he can...
Okay. One other, okay, thanks. One other quick question. So is there a minimum and a maximum square footage of an R2S building size?
There, there is not. There's just a density that's put in place, and so it's one unit per 2,500 square feet is the standard.
I thought there was a minimum of any dwelling unit.
There is not a minimum in the R2S. There are in some areas, in some particular zones, like the East Central Zones have minimums, maximums. Some of the 12th Street overlay has some, but in this particular zone, there's not.
I thought that's kind of why we didn't do tiny homes, is because they didn't meet a, a minimum size.
There is building code requirements for certain spaces needed for like bedrooms, and then having to have certain amenities with that, but it doesn't have a flat-out number with it.
I guess I stand corrected.
Yeah. But we do have some zones that do that, that have a, East Central particularly has a minimum-maximum due to its historic nature.
Right, right.
Any other questions? Joe Wally's up here.
I don't know that I have any other questions necessarily, but I do think, no, I, I know it's hard to envision a development without, or undertaking some of those costs to, to figure out some of those studies, and I get that. The one that troubles me the most is just the easement, and I, I would be fine to delay on this potentially. I'm not sure I'm, I'm ready to move forward with it just based on that, that piece alone, let alone, you know, the traffic concerns are definitely there. I know the park's been mentioned, it hasn't been necessarily offered. I, I don't envision that as a space that would be developed as playable park as in turn, like that we think about as a park, but more along like what we might see with Buse Pond or, you know, when we went to Hope, the, the Resenstein Burger Park. You know, that would be, you know, some trail space through there or something. That's, that's what I would envision. But again, that's, that's down, that's a different thing, but that's, that's kind of where I'm sitting on this. It's just that, that easement is what's probably causing me the most trouble.
Joe, in that, addressing that issue of the easement, that would be half, that would be something that the developer needs to put together to make sure that this works. So if we were to go ahead and approve this tonight, it would be, become incumbent for him to make sure that that easement works for him.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, the project may not come together at all.
I would dare say that's probably going to be the first thing our legal staff's going to look at when the subdivision application would come into play. We'd be looking at those title reports, looking at any recorded deeds related to it. Sometimes there, some old farmers did it. I know, I come from an old farmer family, so I could say this, but I've seen some interesting agreements put together, and so, yeah, sometimes there's some interpretation that needs to be done, but generally what we're seeing on tiles is just a typical easement that we see for access.
So to my mind, and help me with the planning's perspective on something like this, but in my mind, I think we, I'm, I would propose that we go ahead and approve the proposed subdivision today, and then you could work that out with the developer. The rezone, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's, because really this is a first step for any type of development, is the zoning in place to allow that type of development? And if it is, you know, let's, let's pursue it. And I think the big question that comes up with this petition is, if this is possible, is this something the city would want to see occur on this property? And if that's the case, we can let it play out that process. And again, yeah, those traffic studies, geotech studies, the easement requirements, canal reviews and approvals, you know, there's, there's not a few things, there's quite a few. And this is typical for Ogden. We don't get too, some people get pretty shocked, but we're an older city, we're pretty built out. We always joke, we have no low-hanging fruit in the city when it comes to development, and a lot of developers have to, to do a lot of work to be able to see about getting a project to go.
So, and Joe, it, it seems to me that under its current zoning, R1-6, if Mr. Burns wanted to build single-family homes on a 6,000-square-foot lot, he would be required to go through the same process before approval that he is going to have to go through on R2S to gain approval. So really, it's not changing much, except what the ultimate development might look like if they can get over these hurdles.
What he said, that's exactly what I meant to say.
But then additionally, oh, excuse me, go ahead. For me, I'm, I'm thinking, just, I'm going to share my side of the coin, and Ken, I appreciate yours, too. And I'm kind of leaning this direction. First of all, this fits the neighborhood plan. This neighborhood expresses a desire for more housing within it. This is private property at this point in time, not public property, that we're suggesting we sell for development. It's interesting talking with residents of Ogden that don't want any more apartments. They want the next generation to live the same American dream homeownership that they're experiencing in their generation, but tonight I'm hearing we don't want more houses. Where I see this small lot development as an opportunity for first-time homebuyers to get their foot in the door and build some financial stability for themselves and their family, not generational wealth, just get a start with some homeowners equity in a market that is really tight, as Mr. Simpson just said. We don't have a lot of open space in Ogden City. We really kind of have to make what we've got work for housing. And I think this is an opportunity to put down, what was it, 91 possible small homes for people to start with. And maybe there's a child in that house that populates our schools, and there's a, there's a greater tax contribution as a result of property being taxed that reduces the need for our property taxes to go up, and it supports our schools and our city and our, the parks that we have. So I'm okay with Mr. Burns, at this point in time anyway, giving this a shot.
May I just, I'm coming, I'm just to kind of add on that, no, I, I agree about that. I think it would be a beautiful place to live as well, and I certainly care about the animals and the environment. My challenge is, too, just in this discussion about delaying, we did a similar, well, we approved a similar change in property zoning in my neighborhood, and there is an easement issue there as well, and it's actually been held up because of that easement, although we went ahead and rezoned the area. So I think for me, that's one of the challenges, right, is this is private property, someone wants to develop it in a certain way. It's not the city underwriting these types of houses. So I'm willing to let them have a go at this project. When I look around at the high level on the MapQuest, there's a lot of houses around here, and I just, I also beg to have people understand that there used to be wildlife where your house is now as well. So that's something to start thinking about, is how do we preserve our yards? This space also is really close to the mountain, to several other parks that the city helps to provide. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at it, just balancing out those different needs in the community as well, and I'd like to give the private property owner some ability to explore it a little bit further.
So, so I have a comment. So one of the things that we're talking about is a, it's a timeline, you know, a revisionary timeline. And so part of my, and I, I think I'm going back to Councilmember Ritchie's comment of, should we be dealing with the easement first so that that can be like the first thing off the table before we start that, that timeline? And I just don't, I don't have a good answer. I, I, I just don't want to get down the road, have this timeline, and then, then we're in this, as you, kind of this, this no man's land, and then we're trying to figure out, because that's what happens to us all the time. We, we get into this no man's land, and it's like, oh, he's done a little bit of work, and he's not done a little bit of work, and, and where did we make the turnaround at, at that point? So I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, like you are, as far as the easement not being fully vetted, and it would have to be vetted regardless if it was R1-6 or, you know, R1 or R2S. So I guess that's, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, so I'm throwing that out there as a...
That, that caused me some pause also, but, you know, it, it, it does behoove both parties to resolve this before they start putting a bunch of money into this thing. I don't think it's our concern, I think it's their concern, and I think they're, you know, they will, they will handle that. I, you know, like Councilmember Chuburka mentioned, everybody's property was, was wild land at one point, and, you know, I, I grew up on Harrison and, you know, north of Seventh, right close to this, this was, this was my stomping ground when I was a kid. Spent a lot of time on that property, and, but I, but I noticed that as the development started going up the hill, everybody wanted us to protect everything behind their property, even though it was private. And, you know, you just can't do that forever. It, you know, it's just, I mean, it's a, it's a real emotional issue, but it isn't practical to, to take that approach. And us, you know, where this is, the corners touch a night street park, it'd be difficult to say, yeah, we're going to buy that for whatever millions of dollars it is and turn it into this riparian land. I, I saw, it's done, it just doesn't pass the float test, you know, for, for the kind of money that it would cost. And so the private property, I'm a private property guy, I think people who own it ought to be able to do what they want with it within reason. This does seem to be within that, within reason kind of an approach. I, I suppose we could table it, but I don't know what we're going to get out of that tabling, you know? I just don't know that we're going to get anything for it, and I don't know how long that might take. I, I think, I think if we do it, it starts the clock, and all this thing works itself out. I, I think that we ought to go ahead and, as I've waded through this, I think we ought to go ahead and, and give the developer his opportunity to, to try and work it through. Like I told him directly, I'm, it's a, it's a heavy lift. I'm not sure you're going to pull it off, but, but I think you ought to be able to try. So if I was one of the homeowners, I, you know, I, I, I wouldn't count it that, that it's going to happen, because it is a heavy lift. It's, there's just a lot, a lot to have to overcome in order to make this happen. And if you're ready for motion, I'm ready to make one.
Do it.
So Chair, I would, concerning proposed ordinance 2025-29, I would make a motion that we adopt that ordinance and allow this developer to pursue this provision.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Myers, to adopt proposed ordinance 2025-29. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chuburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
No.
Vice Chair Hyer.
Aye.
Chair White.
No. That passes. Councilmember Ritchie.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all the dialogue and the comments. And I see there's a lot of great points there. I do think it is a heavy lift and there are, you know, there's a lot of concerns that I have with it. I think like, like Mr. Rabey said, if it has to happen, then this is probably the best thing that could happen if there's going to be some development there. I do like the idea of, you know, having smaller homes that can give people opportunity. I mean, that's something we talk about all the time. And so that's a positive thing. But just, you know, a couple of those things just give me trouble. And I feel like, I know it's hard for a developer to move forward on a project without some assurances that spending all that money is going to yield an opportunity. But yet, that's just how I feel about it.
Yeah, and I just, I, time and time again, we set these processes in motion and then they get sidetracked for one various reason or another. And then five years later down the road, we still have nothing. And I just, I just really wish that we could have fixed the easement piece first. I do agree that this is, this is not our property. We can't do much with it. We can't keep it open space. And I do think that as Councilmember Graff said, that we do need starter homes for many individuals in our city. And this is a great opportunity for that. So other than being conflicted about the easement and the timeframe, I actually believe this is a good go at it. So.
Chair, if I could just add one thing, as I look at Mr. Burns and Mr. Yates, I hope you'll work through this thing before the land starts to be disrupted. And that if you do resolve this with easement, that you don't disrupt the land more than is absolutely necessary before it becomes evident that you can either, that you can do it. That's what I would ask. That's, you know, that's not part of the motion, but I think that, you know, if you want to do some more in town, as you know, I remember things. So.
All right.
Chair, do you mind if I say a few things? I tried to jump in, but sometimes I feel like I'm in a different zip code over here. I really appreciate everything that's been said and I agree with almost everything that's been said. I do applaud Mr. Burns and his creativity. As was mentioned by Joe, we don't have a lot of low hanging fruit. So it takes a lot of creativity and it takes a lot of vision to want to bring something to Ogden and bring something to our city. So I appreciate his ambitiousness and his vision and his willingness to take a chance and take a shot here in Ogden. So I wish him the best of luck. And I agree with Vice Chair Hyer that the easement has to be taken care of, it has to be addressed. And I believe that's on them to address and to work through themselves. And I hope that that can be done. I, going along with Councilmember Graff's comments, I agree, we try hard to continue to provide different housing options for our residents. And I know, looking back at a very young vision of myself, we were able to buy a home that we might not have even, that we probably shouldn't have bought. It was a little more than we probably qualified for or could afford. But that's, that home allowed me the opportunity to gain some equity and to sell that one and buy another home. And then to take that and buy another home and to be where I'm at now. So it is important for our residents to be able to gain equity if that's the path that they're looking to do and the more options we have for them. And it's tricky too. It's, I totally understand the argument of people that own property around that area. But what we don't have the luxury of hearing is for the people that are going to be buying those homes. We don't know who those people are and we can't hear from them. But I know if I was in that boat again and I was looking to start gaining equity and trying to find ways to add to my financial resume, there needs to be opportunities for that. And so I appreciate Mr. Burns and providing a plan and a development that allows people to do that. I agree that it's not, it's not up for sale. So it's hard to say, well, let's buy this as a park. That's not on the table. So I agree, it's hard to see space go away, open space go away. Everyone has, no matter where you live in the city, everyone has a pocket that they've always used or did always use as a kid or as in the past. And it's hard to see that go away. And I understand that argument. But I just want to thank Mr. Burns and his willingness. I want to thank the residents for coming out and voicing their concerns. I totally understand that. But I do, I do believe this is a project that things have to fall into place. And Mr. Burns had the opportunity to say, let's, there's no need to rush. But he felt comfortable doing that tonight and starting that process tonight. And I, so I wish him the best. And I think he's comfortable with the timeline set forward. And so I think I am too. And I'm happy to see that this was approved tonight and that we all get to move forward. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Good luck, Mr. Burns.
Yep.
Tell your wife hello for me. Congratulations.
Moving on to the next, actually, before we move on, I think one of the things that I just, here's a little bit of my concern and what I was trying to get at too, is that I'd rather not have our staff going down a long road before even one thing, that first thing gets done. And I guess that's up to you mayor and administration. But, you know, that was my point of trying to not have us and avoid us doing a lot of work before all of this gets done. So that's all I was going to say.
Thanks. Can I add a few comments? I just want to say, I appreciate the situation that council finds themselves in on this project. It's pretty similar to the circumstance that America finds itself in right now, where pit against two, it seems like two false choices around open space versus ownership opportunity. And in this case, and we'll often see, people set a narrative that's not really harnessed to the truth. The truth is that this is a property that was zoned for houses. Really, the change that you guys decided on tonight was a change to make it more available to more families for a first time opportunity. I come from a natural resource background. I managed wildlife for 23 years before becoming the mayor. And I recognize the impact that this would have on wildlife. And frankly, it's really a fragmented piece of habitat, the riparian. Whether you're looking at it from an upland or a riparian habitat standpoint, it's highly fragmented from the full landscape of habitats. It's not a healthy circumstance for wildlife. Lends itself to interconnectivity issues amongst the greater herd and populations. It doesn't allow for genetic interchange, et cetera, et cetera. But I just wanted to say that when there's a petition that comes to our office, we have a duty to respond. And with the crisis that we're in for housing across America, I think that you made a sensible choice. I think we made a sensible recommendation in response to that. I do think that there's more and more need for us to be connected to the outdoors. That's something that's really high on our radar right now. And I think we need to be doing things that are investing in the open spaces that we have. I'm really mindful of the personal and emotional connection that people have had with the history on this property while it was private property. But that doesn't make it public property, doesn't make it park space, but it does make it space that people have accessed in the past that has meaning to them. And I think we have a duty to be investing in our public open spaces that have that same amount of importance and connection for people. And we need to amenitize our parks better. We need to make our trails and our open spaces more accessible and amenitized. And I think that that's where our investment would be really well spent. And that's what, that's what we're working on and we're faced with it on other issues in other areas as well. So I just wanted to share my comments about the project and that this was an effort not to eliminate open space in favor of development. It was an effort to allow for opportunity for middle America here in Ogden, USA, instead of really, quite frankly, making not as good of use of open space or undeveloped space, I should say. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Mayor. Next on our agenda is the proposed West Ogden 24th Street Exchange District Plan. Michaela, I don't know, Brandon?
Thank you, Chair White and Council. So Michaela Dunphy from Logan Simpson is going to provide the presentation. Then, yeah, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, Mayor, Chair, Vice Chair and Councilmembers. Just get coordinated here, okay? My name is Michaela Dunphy. I'm a community planner with Logan Simpson. We've been working with the city over the past year on this plan, the Gateway to Ogden, West Ogden 24th Street Interchange District Plan, which I will be providing an overview of this evening. So tonight I will go through the project background, what's in the plan, some of the community feedback that we've received, as well as the Planning Commission recommendation. So why focus on the 24th Street I-15 interchange? Well, as many of you are aware, UDOT is preparing to reconstruct the I-15 and 24th Street interchange because the current interchange isn't expected to meet future traffic needs. So the Gateway to Ogden Plan is an opportunity to build on UDOT's work and really think holistically about opportunities to improve the West Ogden neighborhood. So this is the UDOT's generalized project area. And as background, in 2017, the Utah State Legislature approved $1 billion for a bond program, which included $96 million for reconstruction of the I-15 24th Street interchange. And then in November of last year, UDOT issued a finding of no significant impacts as part of their environmental review, which has led to these proposed actions, one being converting interchange from a half interchange to a full interchange, reconstructing local roads, including 24th Street and then north and east of I-15, and then three, reconstructing roads to the west of the interchange as well. So this here is a more detailed view of the proposal for the interchange. I-15 is shifted to the south as part of this proposal. And 24th Street would be realigned to connect directly with the interchange and local access under the interchange would also be retained as well as improvements to active transportation with a shared use path. So here's a diagram highlighting this project in the context of WFRC's 2019 to 2050 Regional Transportation Plan. And as you also see on this diagram, includes the 24th Street viaduct expansion, which I'll talk about in the context of this plan a little later, which is expected to take place between 2030 and 2040. So here's the Gateway to Ogden study area. This is the plan I'm presenting on this evening. And this map shows the proposed future land use categories. And you can see the study area for this project extends further east than UDOT's study area and includes improvements to the whole West Ogden neighborhood, which I will go into more detail shortly. So as part of this project, we had two public workshops with over 100 attendees. These were held back in December of 2024 and January 2025, where we solicited input on a vision for this plan, gateway concepts, and then appropriate future land uses as well. Here's an overview of the plan's table of contents, the structure of the plan, which includes an introduction, market insights, land use and zoning, themes, goals and objectives, gateway design considerations, as well as an appendices. I'm going to go over some of the highlights within the plan itself. So these are some of the key themes that came out of our community engagement, including establishing welcoming landmarks into Ogden, keeping West Ogden unique. And this is specifically referencing no more boxes related to box apartments and hotels. Three was revitalize historic character. Four, encourage neighborhood community amenities. So interest in amenities like grocery stores, local businesses, improvements to parks, trails and other public spaces. Five, promote economic opportunity. And six, encouraging walkable, safe and well-connected neighborhoods. Those are some of the key themes that came out of our engagement that are reflected in the plan. We also got impact, or we also got input via visual preference surveys at these workshops, lots of support for elements like tree-lined quarters, retaining some of the key existing landmarks, neighborhood gathering spaces, maker spaces, as well as wayfinding in this area. In terms of the market insight section, there's mention of significant opportunity to utilize the industrial land for more family sustaining jobs, really utilize this land more efficiently because there, you know, there is significant heavy industrial land in this area. And vacancy rates in Weber County are at a historic low for industrial land. So great opportunity to, you know, continue to utilize that land. The west side of I-15 is well positioned for industrial, continued industrial development, given the rail access. And then this section also highlights that retail development is most viable on the east side of I-15, where there's strong highway access and a growing residential base. And then there's also discussion of mixed use development being most feasible along the 24th Street Quarter. So here is that future land use map, once again, which includes updates that are compatible with Plan Ogden's overall citywide future land use map. So the updates that are being made as part of the Plan Ogden update are reflected on this map as well. So updates include the addition of a business flex category, which you see northeast of I-15, which supports light industrial office, commercial uses. And then most of the western part of the study area remains heavy industrial. The 24th Street neighborhood remains largely residential, which was, you know, reflected by community members who attended the workshops. Retaining that residential character is really important to the community. So you'll see that in that orange color there, which is the medium density category, aligns with R2 zoning. And then 24th Street has that mixed center designation to allow for a mix of uses through the quarter. This is just a breakdown of those categories I was just discussing. You'll see heavy industrial is 55% of this whole study area. So a significant percentage. And then open space, quite a bit of open space and recreation opportunity within the West Ogden neighborhood as well at 12%. Medium density residential is at 10%. That business flex, 7%. And then light industrial also at that 7%. So the plan includes three key themes and associated goals and objectives. And the first theme is community identity and placemaking. And the associated goals with that theme are to strengthen West Ogden's identity as a connected, livable and vibrant community, enhance Ogden's identity by designing an attractive, welcoming interchange with high quality streetscapes, wayfinding and signage. The second theme is economic development and land use. And the associated goals are to guide strategic economic development near the interchange, to ensure land use and access support long-term economic growth, and then to make 24th Street an economically vibrant mixed use quarter. The third theme is transportation mobility with three associated goals. One, ensure safe and efficient multi- and efficient multimodal access for existing and future land uses near the interchange. Two, minimize industrial traffic impacts on residential neighborhoods through effective transportation planning and design. And then three, ensure that rail infrastructure supports economic activity without restricting safe and efficient vehicular access. And through our community engagement process, we also developed a gateway design theme for the neighborhood, which is reflected in the plan. And the theme that gained most public support was this mountain modern theme, which blends rustic materials like stone, wood, and brick with artistic elements drawn from the rugged beauty of the mountains. So examples, photo examples are provided in the plan, like what you see up on the screen here. And here are two different gateway concept options as potential signage that could be located just off of the interchange welcoming the folks into Ogden. This view is looking east on 24th Street at the D Street intersection, highlighting some of the key elements of the quarter, including parallel parking, protected bike lanes, sidewalks, and, you know, safe pedestrian crossings at intersections. And the plan also includes a series of cross-sections highlighting what 24th Street could look like both before and after viaduct expansion, which I previously mentioned, is a project that would take place starting as soon as 2030, but between 2030 and 2040. So pre-viaduct expansion would, 24th Street would remain three lanes. So these are showing two different versions of that, one at intersections where there would be a turning lane, and then one where there's parallel parking on both sides, as well as a shared use path. These options here present the post-viaduct expansion, the four-lane option, and staff's preference is to minimize the impacts for pedestrians by trying to limit how wide 24th Street becomes post-viaduct expansion. So this four-lane cross-section has two versions because it changes from on-street parking to turn lanes at those intersections as well. And these sections represent the five-lane options, and all of these are presented in the plan as various options for consideration. These are the five-lane options. And the last five-lane option with on-street parking on one side. Also wanted to highlight some of the improvements for 25th Street, including a roundabout at D Avenue, specifically opportunities for neighborhood beautification, including a gateway feature as part of the roundabout, the opportunity for this roundabout to discourage heavy truck traffic and reduce stacking at the intersection, and also allow for better flow at 24th and D Street. So from 25th to 24th and D Street at that signalized intersection. And here's a very simplified concept of what this roundabout could look like with a before and after render. And also want to note that as part of improvements to 25th Street, the plan includes recommendations for a shared use path to provide safer east-west connectivity for bikes and pedestrians. So just sharing a, you know, an example, you know, of what that could look like, an opportunity for safer pedestrian and bicycle access on 25th Street as well. So the plan also highlights access and utility improvements, which include transportation access, green space access, trail connectivity, industrial access, and utility access. And the key local neighborhood improvements include the shared use path that I just mentioned on 25th, improved railroad crossings on 25th as well, and then new local roads. Those are highlighted in purple on this map, as well as your traffic calming, public art, and then utility improvements as well, like the 24th Street water line being brought up to current standards. The plan also includes a very detailed plan list for the 24th Street quarter, as well as an action plan with associated objectives and themes. So this action plan includes lead departments for each of the action items, as well as timing and costs associated. And through this process, we have received significant community feedback on the draft. Prior to the Planning Commission hearing in June, we had a total of 394 views of the draft plan with 35 comments. And then prior to last month's City Council work session on August 26, we had 207 views and 11 comments, so a total of 601 views and 46 comments. I'm going to summarize those on this slide here. In general, many comments appreciating the plan itself, support for the mountain modern design, support for bike transportation improvements, and like bike lanes on 24th Street, and the proposed trails that are included in the plan. There's support specifically for the gateway concept one, and then interested in more gateway signage. Also, just general questions on timing of implementation, which I've tried to lay out here based on what UDOT's timing is for the interchange improvements, as well as viaduct. And then also just want to mention that this is a long-range community vision plan that fits within the context of Ogden's broader Plan Ogden document as well. So really a long-term vision for the area, but, you know, individual changes that would be reflected by changes to the future land use map will, of course, you know, take place over time and, you know, depend on changes to zoning and the private market as well. So long-term vision document. But in terms of specific changes, interchange changes, UDOT has been and will continue to be in contact with any, you know, affected homeowners by the changes to the interchange. For suggestions to add revitalizing single-family housing as an opportunity in the market insight section, this has been added to the plan. Also suggestions to consider an educational campus within industrial areas. And this suggestion has also been added to the plan. There was also a suggestion to enhance and strengthen sustainable design elements and traffic calming measures, which has been addressed in the implementation section, so in the actions itself. There's a specific comment addressing zoning requirements and design guidelines. These are currently being addressed as part of Zone Ogden. And then lastly, interested in just more detail on UDOT's proposed road changes, which just want to note those are documented in greater detail in UDOT's environmental review documents. So coming out of the Planning Commission recommendation in June, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Gateway to Ogden, West Ogden, 24th Street Interchange District Plan. And that was on June 4 of 2025. And then as part of their recommendation, the Planning Commission also requested that the City Council consider seeking funding for the 24th Street viaduct to be expanded into a five-lane arterial and to connect into a new intersection at Wall Avenue. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Michaela. Any questions?
Sure. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to again reiterate in the public meeting what I said in the work session and just like how much I appreciate the efforts of the consultants as well as the staff for doing outreach. I think there was really great engagement in both of the events that I attended, and I really appreciate that.
Council members, anything else?
I kind of have a question on the timeline again.
Sorry. I didn't mean to laugh.
I don't mean to be terse about this, and I know you're not UDOT, but just to give some perspective, back in the early to mid 90s, this was starting to be talked about. I was on the Planning Commission back there, and I was a young man then. I am not likely to live until this gets done. Is this usual? Is this usual that these things take 50 years to get done?
That was the previous century.
I know. It was. I'm just kind of curious why it is such a completely long process.
And I think you're not alone there. The community members are quite perturbed as well, because they've been wondering what's happening for all that time as well.
So do you have an answer for that, Michaela? And I'm sorry to put it on you.
No, I appreciate the question. I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that. I know, you know, it's been a, it's been a very long-term, ongoing discussion. I think that, you know, the more, the more recent progress has taken place since 2017, since there's been, you know, bond funding that will enable the interchange project to take place. And, you know, since then, UDOT's been making progress specifically with the environmental assessment and review process. And, you know, that's, that's where, you know, we've come in to support the city in, in making sure that, you know, Ogden and the West Ogden neighborhood is well positioned to, to, you know, really align with the interchange improvements that the, that UDOT's making, but can't, can't speak specifically to the extensive timeframe of this.
It wasn't a fair question for you, I know. And Mr. Ripian's here to answer that.
Well, I don't know if I have the best answer, but yeah, we do know that UDOT has worked a lot with the, just negotiating the rail crossing. So that's been a huge topic that they've tried to address. And then the reason we started looking at updating this or creating this district plan for the interchange was because UDOT did their environmental assessment. So we wanted to make sure that the plan considered changes to the interchange, where it's pushed further south, and how it impacts the community. So that's why we took initiative and decided to make sure that we were trying to get the best outcome that we could for the community, considering the changes that were proposed by UDOT. But yeah, the timing, we hope is soon. Last we saw was 2029. So we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, that wouldn't be too bad if we could do 2029. It's just been, it's been painfully long. And the railroad thing is a thing. But I remember my dad telling me when the interstate was being routed initially, before it was even here, Ogden's request was to move it closer to Ogden. So it would be, you know, it'd kind of be a thing for Ogden. And they said nah. So they caused their own problem with the railroad. If they'd have moved it in, maybe it wouldn't have been such a big deal. So anyway. Enough said.
Brandon, before you leave.
I'm still, I'm staying here.
Yeah, good. I just go by what Rich Hayer said, but I'm not sure the same way. But as far as the preparation for the Olympics, is that something that's a goal to have this interchange done?
Definitely. Yeah, we want that to be the gateway to downtown. So yeah, our goal is to have it built and beautified way before the Olympics.
I'm not sure that this presentation states that clearly. If I understood it, it was like between 2029 and 2034, something like that. So am I correct?
I mean, yeah, really, we're kind of at the mercy of UDOT. But our goal is to make sure all of our local streets connect into UDOT's network. And yeah, just make it a nice gateway for people to enter into Ogden. But yeah, we'll, we'll take note of that. That highlights that we want to have things in place before the Olympics.
Great. Thank you.
I just have one other question. And I know I brought this up in the work session as well. Is there a possibility, you think, to get a crosswalk of some kind before 2030 over the next five years? So it could be a little safer before we put in all the beautiful amenities?
At what location?
Any location at all. 24th Street.
24th Street, okay.
To the park. I mean, that was one issue. There are people that live on one side. And to get to the park, there's no safe way to do that. There's no flag, there's no pedestrian crosswalk. We have plans in this plan for some very beautiful ones. But in the meanwhile, it'd be really wonderful to have at least one crosswalk.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we've been working with Daniel Gilly, our traffic engineer. So thanks.
Any other questions?
I just have one inquiry, Michaela. On the subject of bikeways and active transportation, it looked like 25th Street was going to carry bike traffic east and west, and then maybe headed west. Does it duck under the interstate route and continue west to connect with the Denver and Rio Grande Western railbed pathway that goes south?
Yes, the 24th Street viaduct will stay. So that, which will allow the trains to go back and forth, but that's where the pedestrians will also go, or the bike path will go under that. So this map, so you see where 25th Street is.
Yeah, it looks like it ducks under I-15.
Does. Yeah, so it goes, connects to A Avenue, and then it heads west. And then, yeah, it goes under the interchange right now that is the existing viaduct. And then it connects and goes down the, what we're calling the New Midland Drive, and then eventually connects into West Haven.
Okay. Thank you.
And you can't really notice this on this, on that map, but that bike trail or shared path also connects into the Weber River Parkway as well.
Down through Fort Bonaventura?
Yep.
All right. There's no more questions for Brandon. And Michaela will go to public input. If there's anybody that has any public input regarding the 24th Street Interchange District Plan.
Janice Starkey, and I live at 2502 D Avenue, where they're proposing, it looked very beautiful on the map, the roundabout, but I couldn't envision it because like I live there and maybe there's 10 cars that go by a day. It's not a busy street at all. It's very residential. It has the West Ogden Park. It has the Catholic Community Center up the street. And then thinking about a lot of traffic and bikes, we don't even have bikes hardly ever going on that street because there's too many big dips. Cars don't even, we don't have a stop sign or yield sign because the dips for the, for the water drainage is so bad. But if they were going to do it, it seems like if 25th isn't really very, very viable for it, it seems like if they would go further, further south, then it would, there's no traffic hardly at all either there. But it, to the south of it is the big area that used to be a dump. to be a dump, I guess. And they were gonna do something with that, but they said they couldn't do anything with it because of the water drainage, because it takes more years. Because we built that house on 25th and D, and they said they wouldn't be doing anything with that. But that seems like a better place for bikes to go. And there's no houses on the other side of what would probably be 26th Street, probably. And there's these little half streets in between, like 24th, Capitol, R Street, 25th, and then that other street that, can't even think of what the name of it is. But a roundabout is like the most ridiculous thing to put, and I think costly and just kind of really stupid in a way to waste that kind of money on something that's really not needed. So, anyway, and but there's property there with people that, the one where the roundabout would be is Val, he's got a great big huge yard, and it really wouldn't hurt us to lose a few feet, but it's just, I don't think it's very cost-effective. And Rich, you were gonna drive out there and look that place over. Did you ever do that?
I have, yeah.
Yeah, so it's like, and we don't even know, in all the pictures we were given for the UDOT thing and the exchange and all that, it really didn't make it clear as to how that was going to come off or where it was going to come off at.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pamela Acock. I live at 2470 D Avenue. I live just a couple houses away from Jan. At one of the meetings, so I've lived there 19 years, one of the meetings they proposed widening the road. Well, if they're gonna widen the road, does that mean the sidewalk going down the street is going to be at my front door? I maybe have maybe six feet front yard, and then there's a sidewalk, and then there's the front strip. It's concerning to me, you know. What are they going to do? I don't see them widening the road is going to be beneficial to anyone on D Avenue because we have small front yards. It's a small community. I like the idea of them putting a stoplight right there on D Avenue and 24th Street to help with the congestion. The stoplight would be insurmountable. I oppose the roundabout totally. The stoplight on D and 24th would be beneficial for everybody around. Putting a crosswalk, Angela, putting a crosswalk right there on F Avenue going across that street, right there by the fire station and the park, that would be super beneficial. That has been my key point this whole time, even when the first meeting, when we talked to him, we said, "We need crosswalks." I can mention so many places in Ogden that need crosswalks. They need one right there by that Ogden sign in Washington Boulevard. They need one right there in between 12th Street and 17th Street by that convenience store because I see so many schoolchildren wanting to cross right there because they do not want to walk all the way up to 17th Street. They don't want to walk all the way down to 12th Street to cross because their house is just on the other side of that. And I know that's totally different, but I drive that route every single day because my kids go to OPA. But I'm just saying, I don't think the roundabout on D Avenue and 25th is beneficial. The stoplight would be beneficial, and the crosswalk, 100% beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Lewis, Ogden, Utah. I come here almost every week, and I listen to these projects, and there's a human element in every one of these developments. You impact the people that live around them. I listen to them about their sidewalks and the roundabout, and I have issues with that roundabout, and the property up on Harrison. And I feel like a lot of these developments, you overlook the people that have lived in these neighborhoods for decades. And what you're doing, a lot of these are impacting the quality of those people's lives. I don't know if any of you ever go back and look at what's been done to the neighborhoods when you've allowed this high-density housing to move into it, just down around the 7th to 12th Street, all those apartments that have been allowed to move in there, dwarfing those little homes now. They've lost their views, they've lost everything, and probably the value of their property went down. And I just feel like you are developing for people who don't live here right now. We live here, and we would like you to take us, put us in that equation somewhere, and how these projects are impacting our lives. And you look at them as revenue per acre. I know that. It's about money and income for the city. And you repeat that week after week, that this is revenue. You brought it up tonight on the piece of property on 7th Street. And they're much more complicated than that. And I think you need to start being, thinking more about the impact on the people around these projects. Thanks. Oh, I want to talk about that roundup, roundabout, and how you're transitioning the four lanes over the viaduct. What are the, how are they planning on doing that? And I heard that roundabout was being put in just to slow traffic down onto the viaduct. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else in the?
Pat Burns, I don't know if you guys remember me or not. I was up there a few minutes ago. So I did my first development in Utah, in Ogden, in 1998. And there was spots in Ogden you didn't want to go to because it would be, you would get robbed, you could get murdered, you could get killed. It was, the cops would tell you, "Don't go down here. After 8 o'clock at night, you don't go here." You don't have that in Ogden anymore. So Ogden has changed and became a city that people want to live in. They're not scared of it. It's not dangerous. It's not, it is nothing compared to, I don't remember what it was, what, eight, 10 years ago, the cops could stop you from this area to this area no matter what reason. I mean, it was just so they had the right to stop some people. And you guys know I'm tired, I don't remember the legal terms for that. But, I mean, how Ogden has changed, I wouldn't let my wife come downtown. Now, we love coming down. We'll walk the streets at night. Talk about a change that has happened to Ogden City. There's not a city I know of that's changed for the better, and it's because of development, because of smart development, the right types of development to bring in, to get rid of half of the abandoned buildings that bums were living, I mean, housily, homeless people that were not, whatever the political word is, not housed, people, sorry. I'm not very politically correct, so. But in this interchange, what it can do for West Weaver, I mean, West Utah, West Ogden, sorry, is incredible. It's great. It's very well planned. Michaela's, we've worked on two other, another project together. I own another building. And anyway, it's, they've done a great job. My father-in-law actually owns Cooney's Machine Shop, which is greatly affected by this. UDOT has treated them very well, the planning they've done and the stuff they've done to do this and to make Ogden better. That's what I have to say about that. Also, I just want to repeat what I said earlier when I stood up was, you guys were a perfect example. You sat here, you debated, you gave great logical questions, answers, debate amongst yourself, very, you didn't have any wackadoodles up here screaming, yelling, which, I mean, you think I'm kidding. It happens. I see it all the time. And if you want, I can tell you story after story afterwards. Very impressed. You guys did an amazing job, not just because you approved my project. If you didn't, I'd still be impressed. So, but thank you, guys. And Ben, you do okay, too. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Warner, I know you had wanted to say something earlier, and I was just waiting for, oh, like this, I lied. We're not even in the public.
You don't have to public comment, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, we have two more hands online. Joey.
Yes, Joey Burnett. I just want to know, is this all available on UDOT's website? All this planning?
You know, I actually looked at UDOT's website for this today. Oh, thank you.
Is that your only question?
Sorry, do you want me?
Yes. Where I can find the documents for this plan.
Okay, we'll answer that in a minute.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't, I wanted him to have his three minutes. Hang tight, we'll answer that in a few seconds. Well, we will go to Heath Sato online.
Hey there, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I can affirm that it is tricky to find stuff. I was trying to look at updated information on this because I do know, at least the last time I was looking at information on this project, that a lot of traffic is going to be diverted down to 25th. So that's where you'll probably see a need for the roundabout. And I assume UDOT is well aware that large roundabouts work and small ones do not. So hopefully, they've worked through that. And I hope everyone in that area is aware of the increased traffic and the amount of space that roundabout will probably take up. I don't know how the communications has been with the people that live right there. The other thing real quick is our dog food manufacturer, Alphia, has been, you know, they employ a couple hundred people, and they just recently sponsored the Dogden event that I was involved in that was great for the city. But we're gonna have to work with them as we develop out that way. I know not a lot of you are out this way. My sculpture studio is out here on the west side, in the more industrial area. And as more nicer places move in to that area, when they vent at night, sometimes you have to shut everything down. It is nauseating, and the wind seems to come this way, out this way. And I work nights a lot out here. So just to be aware that as these projects come up, you might want to start working with them and looking towards the future, and instead of dealing with that when a lot of new residents start complaining. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Heath. Anyone else? All right. All right. Any discussion around any of the questions? I would agree with what Heath just said. I think what the roundabout is being for future use and maybe not for the 10 cars that are going down there now, but for the future of that. So I think they're trying to be ahead of the game and not behind the game, which is the first step.
I just had to clarify, is it okay if I interrupt just for a clarifying question? Because I just wanted to check on that. Sorry. Is that plan for 25th Street the UDOT plan? Or is it something that we can alter? Because it, you know, I just want to make sure it's clear whether we can or cannot alter that plan.
So the scope that UDOT has is basically where 25th Street and, trying to think what the, oh, she's pulling it up right now. This will make it a lot easier. So, yeah, so most of 25th Street is gonna be done locally.
Yeah.
Their scope, actually, can, Michaela, can you go back a couple slides to UDOT's where it shows? Keep going. Oh, no, that shows it right there. So you can see, oh, that one does as well. So you can see where 25th Street stops. So that's where UDOT's planning to do improvements. And then we basically carry that further east, and that's our responsibility.
And to move it farther south, I mean, just to explore that, that's where the land is that we can't really dig into, right, because of the landfill?
Yeah, so the Observatory Park is behind, yeah, 25th Street, well, 26th, really. But yeah, that is impact, or could be impacted. And yeah, you can't put any structures on that property.
Just to clarify for the resident.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you were gonna say something about UDOT and their website?
Yeah, we're gonna get the document.
Yeah, so the plan is actually on plan-ogden.com. That's our project website for Plan Ogden, but it also includes the document for the 24th Street interchange district plan. Oh, plan-ogden.com. And it'll have a tab at the top that says 24th Street.
So we can't really, so people online can't hear you, so can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so the question was, can we put a road on the property that's Observatory Park? My understanding is that it has a clay. Yeah, a cap on it. And I don't know the timeline, but it can't be disturbed for several years. And so I'm assuming that putting a road on that cap would cause issues, but I'd have to do more research.
So.
Question you can talk with him after the meeting.
And I really appreciate those two for showing up at every single meeting. So they're very engaged. I appreciate that.
Yes, they have been way engaged.
I did have a question to follow up on Pamela's point around the front yard and expansion of the sidewalk. You know, I know, you know, some of that is just in the planning stage, but what would happen if private property was to be utilized in any of these scenarios? What is the process with UDOT or with the city if that were to be proposed?
Yeah, so if we did have to acquire more right-of-way, we would have to work with the property owner. That's something that we do all the time with our, with the traffic engineers. They work with property owners. We looked at the right-of-way. It looks like there's enough right-of-way existing that would allow us to use it for future use for what we're planning. So.
So they might want to look at their own property record to see where their property line is compared to where the current sidewalk is or right-of-way. So that might help you know a little bit more about how that would work. Thank you.
Yep.
The last thing is that I'm looking here, crosswalks. Can we, can we follow up? Council member, Chabberka on that one?
Yeah, we definitely have a lot of crosswalks proposed. We want this area to be a neighborhood that's walkable. So obviously, we want to have a good gateway to the, into the city, but we also want the people that live there to enjoy the neighborhood. So we do have a signal proposed at D Avenue. We'll also have a crossing, if I'm looking correctly, a signalized crosswalk at B Avenue. So we'll have a couple areas where pedestrians can safely cross to access the park. And I think that's it as far as, yeah, crossing 24th Street. Street.
Did I miss anything? Trying to.
Chair White, I can provide some context on the Alphia.
On the what?
On the Alphia dog food plant.
Yeah.
So, I think Heath was referring to the Dogden event over the weekend, Alphia was supportive and sponsored, I think they were judging some of the contestants, sounds like it was, everybody had a really good time, but I was on Friday, met with the new ownership group of Alphia, so it's under new ownership from a new national corporation, and they are evaluating all of the infrastructure that they have on site, and have hired a third party to come and review their operation, as well as their scrubber system, et cetera, and are looking at recommendations for improvements to the existing structure. So the new corporation, in our experience, has a different approach, they're more, they have a deeper bench of capital to draw on, I'll just say that, and so the aging equipment that they purchased is in need of a lot of upgrades, and so we're working with them on some voluntary investments that they're making, and they're going through some, they've been through their assessment with their third party, they're looking at alternatives, and they're gonna start making stepwise investments, and those are requiring a lot of permitting right now, and so I'm keeping in touch with them, and we'll be looking forward to updates on what those investments are, and what progress it achieves for mitigating the odors. We're mindful of the odors because it's impacting everybody, it's also impacting the image that people have of us, and I'm also mindful of the hundreds of employees that they employ, almost exclusively from Ogden, most of which are in our Marshall White neighborhood, they employ quite a robust workforce from our downtown city neighborhoods, so we want to make sure that those families continue to have stable employment, but that we're doing it in a way that's collaborative, and that we're encouraging and incentivizing through our enforcement apparatus, some voluntary and incentive-based investments in the capital at Alphia, and so far, they've been very open to that, so, just wanted to share that bit, and then if you don't mind, I wanted to say that, in response to Laura's remarks about development impacts, I think you're right, everything that we do has an impact on people, and we have to be mindful of that, if we're not being mindful of that, we're not doing our jobs, we also have to be mindful of our future, and one of the reasons we ended up with apartments in the places that we did, is because we had outdated land use. We had outdated land use, period, we ran into a macroeconomic force, and the entire nation did, it's not just Ogden, you're seeing apartments built all across the country, because supplies became expensive, labor became expensive, they became limited, there was a lot of demand for homes and demand for places to live, and pencil, projects didn't really pencil without federal subsidies and incentives, and that's why development ended up focusing so much on apartments, and for many cities across the country, including Ogden, we found ourselves in a position where our land use couldn't stop it, that's why when I took office, I inherited 3,200 entitled units of apartments, many of which are in places that maybe they shouldn't be, and that's why we have to be thinking about and planning for our future. If we don't do that, the growth that happens will happen to us, we have to plan for it and prepare for it, or else it will happen to us, we cannot ignore the fact that growth is here, we're the fastest growing state in the nation, we are a built-out city, so we're not growing nearly at the clip of other cities, tonight, we talked about 90 homes, other cities are approving developments of 1,000 up to 10,000 homes, that's the growth rate everywhere else, ours is much smaller, but that's why we're talking about a new long-term plan in 24th Street around this interchange and around the West Ogden community, this is gonna take years and decades to build out, it's not an overnight thing, but if we don't take the steps we're taking right now, we end up with circumstances of random and haphazard build-out patterns that we end up complaining about, because it's not, it's not what's right for us, so we're trying to project into the future while building on the current, if that makes sense, does that make sense? Okay. Yeah, but if we're not looking longer term, we're gonna end up in more of the troubles that we were in when we had the apartment blitz happen to us, so, just, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Assuming that there's not any other comment, I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 2025-16.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Councilmember Graff, to adopt proposed Resolution 2025-16, this is a roll, call, vote. Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer?
Aye.
Chair White? Aye, that passes. Alright, next on our agenda is public comments, this is an opportunity to address the council regarding concerns or ideas on any topic, you have three minutes.
Chair, well, people line up, may I just make a comment backing up Mayor Nadolski's comments, it's like, that's why it's so important for residents to engage when we're creating these plans, this plan literally could be in place for the next 40 years, as we know from our general plan, hopefully, the council won't continue to, or the administration won't put it off to update plans more often, but that's why we just, you know, redid the general plan, are working on that, and the zoning plan, and I don't think residents really understand how impactful those engagement sessions are and those surveys are that we send out, because they will set up the future, and that's what happened in this neighborhood that we made the decision tonight on, is it, it was already zoned for residential in this area, even though people got used to the idea of using it, right, so, I think that's one thing I've learned being on the council, and never in my life would I have thought, when I buy a property, to look and see what the properties around it are zoned, right, or what the community plans are in the area that I'm buying a house, so that might be something for, you know, everybody needs to be more aware of, is that there are plans out there already, and obviously, they change over time, but sometimes not very quickly, which is on purpose in some cases.
Right, good comment. Alright, public comment, now is the time to come up, yes.
Appreciate the opportunity to begin to address the committee here.
State your name again.
My name is Darrell Warner, I'm a resident on 7th Street at 673, down at the bottom of the hill, I just wanted to ask a question in regards to, when the, I'm excited about the development, I'm excited about the growth that takes place in Ogden City, and I'm always just concerned that we don't, and that impact of the community that's there right now, we don't compromise the integrity and the safety of the community based on the conditions that are set forth prior to the construction being developed, and the developing happening. I was, I know when Ogden City approves something, development, the curb and gutter gets put in by the process of the developing process on that, is that just, is that just the facing of that property, or can it impact, in our situation, with looking at the 7th Street Hill, if that's to hypothetically go through, that top of that hill has no sidewalk, because the Plum Creek development went in and put the sidewalk up to a certain point, and now with that hill being so steep, there's, with the sidewalk being right to the street, to the curb on the north side, that those residents are kind of a wall stacked up there, and the integrity of that gets a little bit fuzzy looking at the time, because of, there's, it's so high on their properties, and there's parking on the street there, and so my concern is, is when they develop it, if they could take into consideration the, across the street, there's a community church that's across the street, and there's also residents that live over on 650, on the cul-de-sac, that use the back of that property, and they have no desire to see in their backyard, on the other side of the fence, a sidewalk put up on the 7th Street Hill, so that's been a compromising position, because the traffic that comes traveling west hits that gravel, and there's just asphalt, the soil erosion goes down the hill, ends up in the sewers at the bottom of the hill, all over the top of the hill, the street cleaners are maintaining it, so with the narrowness of that, I know only the certain individuals in the city have permission to eliminate parking on that hill, but it's, it would be wise to put a sidewalk closer to the residencies, give them a park strip up there, eliminate the parking on that crest of that hill, because there's many accidents that take place, and I'm concerned with also the development off of the Ogden community down at the bottom of the 7th Street, prior to Washington Boulevard, that's been sitting vacant for many years now, they tore down an LDS stake center that was there, and that's a development, we have the Shoshone, we have the Plum Creek, and we have a, not a very nice street to live on, on that hill, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Laura Lewis, Ogden City resident, one thing I want to address, Councilman Graff, it's not that we don't want homes, start our homes in Ogden, it's just that that is a very unique piece of property, and we don't own it, so it is a moot point, but it's the principle of the thing, you can't find pieces of property like that all over Ogden, it's very unique, and that's what we are saying, is that it really is not the best thing for, best place for a high-density housing development, I mean, I would, if you're gonna do it, the smaller density, lower density, would be a much better option, and then to the mayor, that is not a fragmented piece of property, there is a path all the way down, right away along the canal, all the way up to the mouth of the canyon, and that's where those deer and all the animals migrate, so it's not really fragmented, and it is a moot point, like I say, but back to that development, I don't see how this is going to have any more affordable housing than what's already there, I mean, those homes over there on Melody Lane are single level, they're probably maybe 1,100 square feet, and there's homes in that area for sale now, so how are these going to be affordable homes? And someone else brought that up, too, also, I have a question on the 10-year restriction on owner occupied homes, so after 10 years, if I understood that correctly, then we could have investment companies come and buy those homes, is that correct? And then you've done away with what the objective was here, to provide an opportunity to develop wealth, by letting a development company come in there, and also, when you make your plans for these developments, are you looking at the fact, I know you're looking at 25, 50 years, but the birth rate in the whole world is dropping, it's down to 2.1 in Utah, growth in Utah has dropped from 4th to 10th, and this seems to be a trend, so as you're planning on all these developments, are you sure that this is not a cyclic event that is going to go away, and then we're gonna be left with a lot of empty dwellings, houses, and apartments, and, let's see, and I do think you really need to look at that thing on 7th Street, I drive that street, Monroe and 7th Street, at least once a day, and the top of 7th Street is going to be very dangerous, and it is narrow, there's homes right up on the north side, on a very steep embankment, I don't know how, you would have to figure out a way to reinforce that, what is it, oh, okay, thanks. Thanks, Laura. Anyone else?
I have to say, Janice Starkey again, okay, 25th and D Avenue, I'm still really confused as to even whether it was 26th Street or our street, 25th Street, going clear over to A Street, and then somehow going down, because I've taken, the kids are down there to the ballparks, and to, I've gone to the Mountain Man Rendezvous at Fort Wayne Ventura, how are they going to be connecting, going over to A Street, and then somehow under the viaduct, and then where is that gonna come out for people to come into Ogden? I just, it just seems confusing, because as soon as you get from 25th, 26th, it's like there's a street that goes to Observation Park, and then there's just straight down that goes into the area of Fort Wayne Ventura, and I don't think you want to do anything to Fort Wayne Ventura, because that is a very, very historical landmark, that's all.
Alright, seeing no other movement in the chambers, I will go online to Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident, Mayor Nadolski, thanks for that Alphia update, I really appreciate hearing that, and yeah, I know they're a much larger company with deeper pockets, so I hope that works out well, and thank you for the Plan Ogden link, and I was just looking at that, and I was looking at the gateway feature again, and I had actually brought this up last time this came up, as it's currently presented, it's, there's no way to say this nicely, it's very lacking in inspiration, and I know we're in early days, so I just wanted to point that out, a 2D flat sandstone mountain cut from a slab is just very generic, and what I've seen all over the US in different places, and I just want to put it out there as the entrance and the welcoming point into Ogden, is just something worth putting a lot more thought into, and whether it's sculptural or relates in some way to our Ogden arch, like the welcome sign that will be installed at the south end of Ogden on Harrison, I think, I just hope we can be inspired to do better. And actually, speaking of that, the welcome sign at the south end of Harrison and Ogden, I saw the old sign got taken down a long time ago, I was just wondering what the estimated date for the replacement is, that was, I remember those approved a long time ago, so I just wondered if there's any updates on that, I'm looking forward to it, thanks.
Thanks, Heath. Alright, going online to.
Linda Sanchez.
Linda Sanchez, ending in 267.
Unfortunately, my phone's gonna die, so I will make this really quickly, Councilman Hyer, I really appreciate you talking about Constitution Day coming up tomorrow, I do encourage everyone to read the Constitution, so that you can represent, or that I feel like you could represent me to the fullest, with that being said, kids, or actually, it's really good for anybody, if you want to learn about the Constitution, there's a place down in Vantifol, and I'll try to put up a flyer of the address, and it's generally Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and it's very educational and inspiring, with that being said, I also want to just let everyone know, Biblical Citizenship class is going on as well, I think I could also put a link in there, and what I did learn, that I have never ever been taught in my life, is about the forefathers' monuments, and I will, I will link in the comments about that as well, because really, that is what the pilgrims, when they came here and did, for hours upon end, to make sure that we understood what to do to keep and preserve our freedoms, with that being said, my phone is gonna hang up on you, so I will yield back, God bless all of you, and God bless the USA.
Thanks, Linda. Alright, no one else online? Yeah, I think as this develops a little bit more, as they get further down the road with the sidewalks, I think that that will be part of that whole development agreement and what they're gonna do there, so I am hoping that that's what they're planning on doing, at least. Janice, I think it would be great for you to maybe reach out to, Brandon has left, it looks like, but maybe, you know, the confusion around where those streets are, I think when they were talking about underneath the viaduct, I think they were meaning on the interstate, not on 24th Street, so, at least that's what I was understanding.
That's what I understood, too.
And Heath, I probably ask about the welcoming sign. And Heath, I'd probably ask about the welcoming sign on the south end of town on a regular basis. And I think where the holdup is, is that we don't have power to it yet from Rocky Mountain Power. The mayor's nodding his head, but I don't know that we have an estimated timeline on that.
I don't have a timeline update, but I was going to say the same thing, that some things are out of our control, but we're pushing for and waiting for.
And at this point, I don't know that we have any idea how big those houses are going to be on, in that parcel. Or, or how affordable they are. I don't know any of those, those details yet. Again, I don't know. Eight hundred is where it'd be at this point. And then, thanks, Linda, for bringing up the citizens, or the Constitution Day and then the Biblical citizenship class. All right. Comments from the mayor?
No, nothing else to add. I appreciate how hard you guys have turned through some difficult decisions, but important decisions. So thank you for your diligence and attention to detail.
Okay, yeah. Councilmembers, anything?
I have one. I just, I don't know if everyone saw that, but last week, the administration put out a survey for Ogden City seeks public input on the proposed trail alignment at Mount Ogden Golf Course. I don't know if that's on our website or not. There is a link, www.OgdenCity.gov/trailsurvey. So just wanted to thank the administration for, A, the dialogue that we've been able to have, and B, for following up and promising that they would get something out. And I just encourage all residents to take the survey. I took the survey. I think it's four questions. So it's fairly simple, and it's got a detailed map on there. And I think it's, it's a, it's a great starting point, and it'll hopefully spur more, more dialogue and so we can go from there. So thanks to everyone that had a part in that.
Yeah, good. Other councilmembers? All right.
I got one more thing about the Constitution. If, if you really want to read the Constitution, and then you, and then you feel you want more, the Federalist Papers answer lots and lots of questions about the Constitution. That was the dialogue that the founders had when they were in the Constitutional Convention. Pretty good stuff.
I think the Google machine can tell us some stuff.
Google might be able to tell you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Myers, to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We don't have a meeting next week?
Oh.
Or the following week.
Hey, you can take Dave for that.
Oh, yes. Forgot about the whole students, yeah.